How's it going with the internet on my end? Can you hear me, see me? Okay, all right. Sorry to the audience, I'm having some technical difficulties, which I know we can all appreciate in this day and age. It's been a crazy year and I've had a crazy day, but here we are. So, welcome everyone, it's nice to be here tonight with all of you. Let's see, roll call first. Eliana.
Tracy Wells.
Here.
Tracy Lawson.
Here.
Tracy Marcus. Vice President Diaz-Silcom.
Present.
President McAvoy.
Present. All right, well, welcome to the February 24th meeting. And if you require Spanish interpretation, I'll post it in the chat in a moment. Si necesita interpretación española, por favor, llame al 978-9090-5137 y preseone 8377041 pound para la contrasenia. Gracias y bienvenidos. Feel free, one of the real Spanish speakers, if you want to correct anything I said. All right, good. Let me see here, just a minute, I want to put in. Okay, thanks, I'm going to try to put it in the chat box as well, so we can invite all our Spanish-speaking friends to join us. Okay, there we go. All right. Let's see, let me continue on. Like I said, thank you everyone for being here. We're always welcoming of our parents and community members, teachers and staff. And we really appreciate all the various emails. You're always sending us resources and ideas to help us do a better job, so we really appreciate that. And I have posted in the chat the agenda, as well as information on commenting, so you'll need to fill in a comment card if you'd like to comment. And I did look earlier before the meeting, and it looks like we had about eight speakers, so we'll be able to provide three minutes to each speaker, if that keeps up, if we start to get more speakers coming, and we may bring it down to two minutes each, but at this point, it's three minutes. And we'll call you on the item when your item comes up. I did see that there was one for oral communication that's not on the agenda, so I will call you there. If there's any others that are not on the agenda, we'll call you at the beginning under oral communication. And as a reminder, the board meeting is for board business. We have a lot to cover, every board meeting, making decisions. And we certainly welcome all of your input. And we are, as you know, doing additional updates to start our community on COVID and reopening and all of that as part of our board business meeting. And as a reminder, please, when you do make a comment or comments in the chat, just try to keep them respectful and factual, and we really do want to hear from you. And it's an opportunity for all of us to model kindness and respect like we would like all of our students and children to have, so that's a great opportunity for all of us. And as a reminder, because we're meeting virtually, all the meetings will be roll call, and Ms. Garcia will help me out with that. And I think that's about it, so we'll go ahead and just get started with the agenda.
Alyssa.
Let's see.
Alyssa, we need to do 4.2 report out.
Great, thank you. Okay. So on mine, it's three? Three? I don't know. So I'll report out on the closed agenda items.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I was just doing the welcome meeting, then I was going to get to that. So I don't know, you know, sometimes the agenda I print out has slightly different numbering than the agenda online, so... Basically, we didn't have any oral communication on closed session items. So the closed session, just an update on what we discussed. We did talk about the CS. We basically received information from staff. We gave some direction to staff, and we also accepted staff recommendation. So that's what happened in our closed session. Is that what you were talking about, Janet?
Yes, yes, it was.
Okay, okay, great, thank you, thank you. Feel free to jump in anytime, this is a joint effort here. Okay. And now we're back to the regular session. Okay, and I did the welcome. Oh, I see what you mean, you're right, okay. Gotcha. It's kind of funny, we cover the closed session before I welcome everybody and let our Spanish-speaking friends know about Spanish translation, but maybe we'll readjust the agenda a little bit. Okay, so any changes to the agenda? All right, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Still moved?
Okay, all those in favor? Oh, Eliana, roll call.
Tracy Wells.
Aye.
Tracy Lawson.
Aye.
Tracy Marcus.
Aye.
Vice President Diaz-Silcom.
Aye.
President McAvoy.
Aye. All right, I think what I made, but I'm still here, so let's try that. Okay. Let's see, oral communication. I know that we did have one speaker card initially, and maybe Eliana or Kyle, you can see if there's any others that might come under oral communication. We... Oh, let's see, I thought I wrote it down. Oh, I don't know, where did I write that down? Eliana or Kyle, can you see who was the speaker? I know it was somebody from the UCNS.
His name is Hugo Torres.
Oh, thank you. So if we can move Mr. Torres over?
I do not see that person in the attendees list.
Okay. All right, raise your hand if you're here, if you're under a different name, maybe. And I'll look for you. Actually, is the raised hand? Well, you could put it in the chat if you're here, and... Yeah, I don't see anything in the chat. Okay, well, let's go ahead and move on. Maybe they were unable to make it to the meeting tonight, and we can hear from them at a later date, or encourage them to send us an email. I think it was something around after-school programs with the CNU Center and wanting to partner with us. All right, so, all right. One of my favorite parts of the board meeting, right here, school and community reports. Tonight, we're going to hear from the Mandarin Immersion Program in honor of our Lunar New Year. And I know that many of the Mandarin Immersion parents reached out to board members and district staff around all the various celebrations that the school was having and celebrating. And it got me thinking that it would be nice to hear from them to help us celebrate the Lunar New Year. So I think at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Catherine Rivera. And I did want to say a special thank you to Megan O'Reilly-Green and also Pei Chen Liao. I think the two of them did quite a bit of work, and I know there's other parents as well, who also helped put the presentation together. But thank you very much. Catherine, over, is she here?
I'm here.
And I think she'll say a few words, and then Kyle, you'll play. Oh, great, there she is. And so Catherine, you can say a few introductory words, and then Kyle will have the video all ready to go.
All right, yeah, thank you, Alyssa. So I just wanted to say that our community, and the Mandarin Immersion community at Orion School here in Redwood City, we are so thrilled to share with everybody in Redwood City our New Year celebration. It's one of our goals of our program is to have and continue to build cultural pride and appreciation, not just in Chinese culture, but all Asian cultures, and build self-esteem in our students. And it is incredible to see it, even in distance learning, kids are learning Mandarin. Mandarin Immersion, virtually, it's amazing. Normally, our Lunar New Year celebration is a sight to behold if you ever have a chance to come to downtown Redwood City and see the hundreds of our children singing in Mandarin. It is so amazing. We take over the entire plaza in downtown Redwood City. So I really hope that in the future, in the near future, we get the opportunity to really showcase our amazing program soon. And I have a special thanks to our teachers who are so diligent in making sure kids have engaging projects and a way to showcase their language skills throughout the school year. And our parents are cornerstone to our program, and the reason we exist here in Redwood City is for the continued passion of our parent community. So thank you, parents, for bringing this together. And you already recognize them, Alyssa. Alyssa, it was Megan and Pei Chen Liao for putting this together during our break.
All right, so Kyle, if you want to... So thank you very much, Principal Rivera. We really appreciate your leadership on the school site. And Kyle, if you want to bring up the video, we're ready for that now.
Oh, no. I think it's...
All right, well, thank you very much, Kyle, for getting that online for us. Thank you, Principal Rivera, and the whole Mandarin Immersion community. What an uplifting presentation with all the wonderful New Year's celebrations. And I think all of us are so jealous who do not speak Mandarin. What a gift we're giving these students in our school district. So I know all of us on the board, and our district staff, and our school staff and community were so proud of these kids and these families, and how hard you're all working. So how uplifting. And I did want to give a shout-out that, you know, normally around Chinese New Years, you probably know that people give out the little red envelopes, usually with many of them, but that would not be appropriate to give a board member. So I got a whole lot of little red envelopes with thank-you notes in them. And I just wanted to, like, look at the beautiful artwork that I got. And all of them were so heartfelt from parents about their students achieving. And just really wonderful. So I just want to say thank you so much to the Mandarin Immersion community for reaching out, saying hello around the New Year and welcoming us. And I know, I saw Mike was on the dumpling workshop. I was there as well with my daughter, and he was there with his daughter, I think. And I know there was lots of families. We were able to make dumplings together, so that was a lot of fun. So, thank you. And do any other board members want to say anything? All right. Okay, well, thank you so much. And I did want to say, because I know we have a lot of staff on the meeting tonight, if you have any other ideas for student inspiration, student artwork, music, dancing, whatever, just send a link on to Dr. Baker or myself, and we will put you on the schedule for upcoming board meetings. It's a really wonderful way for us to start our meetings, keeping the focus of children in mind. So thank you very much, everybody. Okay. All right. So, let's see. Number 10, the bond program consent items.
I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Oh, roll call, please.
Wells.
Aye.
Tracy Lawson.
Tracy Lawson. Aye.
Tracy Marcus.
Aye.
Vice President Diaz-Silcom.
Aye.
President McAvoy.
Aye. All right, so, Mr. Diaz, thank you so much to you and your team for all you're doing. You're welcome to stay on the board meeting, but I know you have a lot to do. Every couple weeks, we're getting a whole long list of all the good things you're doing.
Thank you.
All right, good evening. Thanks. Okay, and there's no bond program action items. And so we're on to discussion. I know a lot of why people are here tonight is to hear about discussion on COVID-19, reopening plans, and all of that. So, Dr. Baker, take it away. You're mute.
Thank you for reminding me. Don't want to get any background noise in here. So, good evening to all the board members, and good evening to all the community members and teachers and staff that are here with us this evening. So, we are going to present to tonight some more information that we do at every board meeting regarding COVID-19. And tonight's about a reopening plan. It's also going to be about information from a recent survey that was given to our teachers. And we have the results that Wendy Kelly will be sharing with you all and sharing with our community. We shared it with the principals today and spoke about it. And so what I want to do is take us through where we're going in the next few weeks. So, Kyle, I think you have the presentation, if I'm not mistaken.
I do, I'll show it right now.
Thank you. So, we can go on to... Yeah, just go on to the next slide. Okay, continue. So, we're going to start out first. Every time that we do an update on COVID, we start out with some information of what's going on at some of our school sites. So, this evening, we're going to present North Star Academy, and the principal Sarah Shackel will be talking a bit. And then we will go on to McKinley Institute of Technology, and Mr. Nick and our Giakas, who's the principal, will also say a few words. So if we could unmute Sarah? Oh, she is unmuted, I see. So Sarah, take it away.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. So, I am Sarah Shackel. I'm the principal of North Star Academy, and I...
Oh. We lost her.
Hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'm Sarah Shackel. I'm the principal of North Star Academy. And I want to start first with a few just thank-yous. First and foremost, thank you to Dr. Baker for your leadership, to Wendy Kelly and Liz Wolfe, and everyone at the district office. This, what you're going to see today is many, many hours of lots of work from lots of people. So I'm just here to present it, but it really has been a group effort to get where we are today. Also, I wanted to say thank you to Kelly Noriega, our assistant principal, and Mr. Fenar Giakas, who is the, you know, other principal at the site. We worked very closely, all of us, to make this happen. So, the program that we have at North Star started first by trying to figure out what our needs were. We're a unique school, as all the schools in Redwood City are. And we wanted to sort of figure out what was important. So we started with a survey to the teachers and to the families to figure out what it was that teachers wanted to do, as well as what families felt comfortable with doing. And then we took that information to site council, and site council decided, based on all of that input, about what our priorities were. So what was it that we were going to be sort of making the centerpiece of the work that we did? So the first priority that we decided on was to keep the academic integrity of our program. It was important to our families and to our teachers that we didn't interrupt the academic portion of the school day. So you'll see that in our structure. We still have all of our core classes in the morning from 8 until noon. And so we didn't have to switch kids' grade or teachers. We didn't have to switch cohorts or classes. We were able to keep that. And then our other priority was really looking at their social and emotional needs. And so that's really where our program was built. So, we started first with a pilot program. There's 13 students in that pilot program. That's run by our amazing RSP team. Liz Latham and her aides all agreed to return in person and work with the students who needed it. That started in November and has been very successful. We've seen much more engagement from the students. They're doing better in their classes. So that program has continued. And then we added the hub, which was more of that where we have a wonderful teacher. Thank you, Linda Montes, who provided that to our students. Were able to get kids on campus who maybe were having issues with technology or just issues with focus at home. And so those two programs are full-day programs. The kids come at 8:30 in the morning and stay until 3 o'clock in the afternoon, and they do their classes virtually. But there's a lot of sort of support around accessing the curriculum, making sure that things are done, that they know where to get assignments and when to get on class and so forth. So that's been really successful. And then in the afternoon, for third grade, we added each of our third-grade teachers. Shout-out to the third-grade team, came back, they're awesome. And they have small groups. They were already doing small groups in the afternoon, but they transitioned to on-campus small groups for those families who wanted to come back. And they do reading groups and writing groups and math groups. You'll see in the pictures in a minute, they were doing fractions the last time I went in there. And they really got our third graders, who are the first group at our school. So they really got them engaged and doing sort of classwork. They also, the way we have it set up, the kids who are there have some sort of recess play, PE, outdoor time. And so during that time, the teachers are able to do small groups with students who are still in distance learning. So our third-grade team really is working incredibly hard and was able to sort of do everything, which is a lot. And then from our fourth through eighth grade, we have one cohort at each grade level. And they come onto campus, and there's three sections to their day. They have an outside recess, you know, socialization time. That's a little bit more free-form. They stay in their zones and all of that. And then they have some enrichment time, so they're working on some enrichment projects. And then they have some social-emotional learning time. So I'll talk a little bit in a minute about what we've been doing with that. But that's really been successful. So in total, we have about 200 kids on campus, and it's really been awesome. It's really, I love having the kids there. It really has made a difference to them. We do a weekly attendance survey, and I track their sort of emotional well-being each week, and I've kind of kept up with it. And recently, I started tracking the sort of well-being of the people who are on campus and our scholars who are off. And it was amazing just what a large percentage of the students had a positive mood, you know, whether that was confident or they felt great about being at school if they were on campus. And it wasn't that the kids who are off-campus had a bad mood, that they weren't sort of negatively reporting. They were reporting more indifference, like they were just feeling more disconnected with school. They still do the work and they, you know, do their assignments. They just don't have that connection. So that was really interesting to see. It's something I'll continue to track. But it's been interesting to really look at how just simply coming back to school has affected the students who've been able to do it, which is really awesome. So our primary focus at North Star this year, or one of our big focuses, I should say, has been around social-emotional learning. It's something that's really important to us. And Kyle, if you can go to the next slide with the pictures on it, I can kind of guide you a little bit about what you're seeing. So this is just a snapshot of our campus. You can see that, you know, we're able to follow all the procedures and all of that. That's been great. But we're able to see really sort of happy and healthy kids. And that's largely because of what we've been able to do with our program. So our PTO, which has always been super supportive, I want to give a shout-out to them. They have doubled our financial resources for our Star Vista counseling time, and it got filled up right away. So we went from having one service to counselor to having two. And they've been able to sort of see students all year. They will, and they will continue. They've been a huge resource. We've also been very, very fortunate with Artosa, Gina Siddy, who's wonderful, and she's been working with Michelle Griffiths. She's been running this really amazing program. We meet every week. We're able to really look and see which of our students needs help. Maybe it's a grade that's fallen or a family crisis. And we're able to build systems and structures to help each of those kids as they've needed it. So that's been really great. We also, as I said, are doing our emotional check-ins each week. The teachers do them too, but I do them on Wednesdays just to, you know, check in with the kids. We pair that with our Griffin Gathering, is what we call it. And we have a weekly assembly. We do one for third through fifth grade and one for our middle school grade. And we start by getting everybody together. We do announcements. Sometimes we've had guest speakers come in. And then we go into breakout rooms. And so each grade level has a breakout. And I run one, Miss Siddy runs one, Miss Noriega runs one, and it's so fun. The things that, that's kind of more of a free-form. The things that they talk about are hysterical, and it's very great appropriate. So in third grade, I hear all about the teeth that have been lost and their pets and what they're doing in karate. It varies widely, but it's always very entertaining. And then eighth grade is a little bit more serious, and we talk about the topics of the day and how they're feeling. We might also talk about video games and things they care about, but it's really a great way to connect with them. So we've done a great job just making sure that we're staying together as a community. We continue to have things like spirit days and family events. We've had... We continue to have things like spirit days and family events. We've had a, a magician came and did a really cool night. We did. We've got a bingo night coming up. So there's lots of things that we're doing to sort of keep the community, community together. But at the end of the day, and I always say this, but our students are our stars. They have done a tremendous job keeping the focus on school, on staying attentive to their academics, but also sort of communicating and being part of the community. As you can see in the picture, I love the picture in the star. This is one of our young scholars, and he held, they were doing some, you know, work with paper, and he held up the scraps of the paper, and he said, this is what it's like learning in COVID, meaning that they're on the screen all the time. So it really has been helpful to get them back on campus. I'm hopeful that we're going to be able to do that more and more. I know that that's something that we, we hold a lot of value in. And our staff has, you know, been really excited about that. So I welcome you to visit anytime. You're always welcome at North Star. You're welcome to come to Griffin Gathering, or if you'd like to come through and see classes, I'm happy to take you through our virtual classes, or you can come in the afternoon and we'll show you what's happening in person. So thank you all very much, and I hope you have a lovely evening.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. Do you want to, are we hearing from several schools tonight, or?
We have McKinley, that's next, MIT. Are there any questions for Sarah?
Yeah, I'm sorry. You can ask me questions now or after Nick goes.
Yeah, why don't we hear from Nick? And then if we have any comments or questions, we can take them then.
Awesome.
All right. So do we have Nick? Uh, thank, thank you, Sarah.
Nick, are you available, Nick? Mr. Fenner Giakis, where are you?
You guys got me?
Yeah, have you now?
It's the, it's the garage. So, okay. All right. Good, good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well. Thank you, Dr. Baker, Ms. Kelly, Redwood City School Board, for providing me some time to update you on MIT's school year and our return to school journey. Before beginning, anything I'm able to share is due to a very supportive staff that I've had the honor of leading for the past six years. So thank you, staff. I would also like to thank the tons of district support around development schedules and professional development specifically. It's, it's, I think, our department's exemplary. Ms. Kelly and Ms. Wolf received plenty of, plenty of master schedules from me in July of the summer. So thank you. Most of what I'm going to share with you are the efforts MIT has made throughout the school year to keep student schedules and experiences as similar as possible, as if they were back on campus. In August, based on parent feedback and teacher discussion, we decided on a schedule that prioritized students seeing each of their teachers virtually every day. Now, for a middle school, that's, you know, four to six teachers. So we were able to accomplish this with teachers adjusting from synchronous to guided asynchronous throughout the week and day in order to balance screen time. MIT's aim was to provide guided asynchronous work to allow student choice, flexible work schedules, and small group work. We found that to be very successful as our attendance is within five points of a regular school year. So that's considering all the other factors. As of today, MIT has approximately eighty-three students back on campus. Seventy-one students with, within seven pods are with their teachers, receiving live instruction, and one classroom of students is in a hub. Quick shout out to our six-seven SDC teacher, Anna Rice, who came back first in early November with eleven SDC students and four students who elected to stay distant. So that teacher was doing dual. Awesome job, Ms. Gertz. So we continued, so she sort of led the, in, we had our parent survey in November, December, and we had a large group of parents that elected to stay distance learning. So we had to develop a schedule that balanced, balanced both distance learning schedules and in-person. So our teachers on, are managing this in their pods, teaching them in person, and instructing students online. So it's, so if you can imagine twenty kids online, seven kids in front of you, and the teachers are going back and forth. And it's been going well. So we're really excited. We'll be adding, we'll be adding more pods in the future. So thank you, teachers, to lead the way and so that we can do it. Our first month of students returning. So you know, when you start seeing kids the first time, and then you realize that this is the way it's supposed to be and what we've been doing the past year, which has been great, that first week was incredible. And we're noticing that this, this is why we got in this profession. This is why the teachers got this profession. This is why I got in this profession. This is what the experience of teaching live, there's nothing more, there's nothing better to it. We had our sixth grade student, one of our sixth students came up to me, who I've only met via Drive Pickup Materials or on Google Meets. And, you know, I'm, we're all wearing masks, and he looks at me and he goes, you're Mr. F. I'm like, this is awesome. We need everyone back. So those of you, as we're getting students back, these experiences are extremely exciting, and, and it's going to get better and better. Okay? If you, Mr. Kyle, can we can go to the pictures on the next slide, please, sir? So this is what McKinley School Day looks like. So the pictures you see here is what it looks like. You can see, I want to thank Ms. Wolf, who visited us about a week before break and got to all our classrooms and visit most of our classes virtually as well. We have principal's coffee every other week where we go over school events, and I take parents into the classes. So if a school board wants to pop in to one of my principal's coffees, we visit classes each week for our parent community. I want to also thank Ms. Herrera, the principal of Taft. Back in November, I had the pleasure of visiting her school, and she was leading the reopening. The systems were in place. We were able to steal some ideas, and maybe now I could claim them as my own, but great job, Ms. Herrera. If we go to the next slide, please? So a lot of the work we do at McKinley is integrating technology and it's sort of a technology projects. And it's sort of our second year endeavor, and I really wanted to share, I sent it to the school board earlier in the week. And Ms. McAvoy, we talked, you mentioned to me about student work. There's a lot of student work here, and it was developed this year via distance learning. These technology projects are some of the latest pieces of MIT's instructional journey during the past six years. Our staff has asked to develop at least two digital projects, one in the winter and one in May aligned to the ITSE technology standards. Dr. Huerta, our awesome, Dr. Huerta Reeves, our awesome assistant principal, has made this website and collaborated with our staff this year, and it really shows off some phenomenal work in the core content of our, of our, of our classes. It's work from our teachers and students. So the website, you can access the website on our web, our website, the McKinley website. It's also linked here. Just quick background, you go in, you click on a content area, English, social studies, et cetera. And you click on the emoji, will show you a video of introducing you to our awesome teachers. If you click on their name, it'll show you the project and student work. So there's thirty or forty samples of student work aligned to these technology projects that are aligned to core content, which, these aren't electives. I think the best way to use projects is as long, if they're aligned into the core content. And so they're really great. A quick shout out to one project, Kyle Brumbaugh and his team have helped us pilot Minecraft, which has been a two-year odyssey. And we have our first projects in Minecraft aligned to sixth grade social studies. And seventh grade social studies is coming soon. So if you are able to click, and I know it's quite a few steps there, so maybe, I don't know if we can do it now, but the community has access and, can you? Yeah. You might not be able to, but it's on our website. It's, it's all linked. So it's really great if you have some time to look through it. Well, on the last slide, you'll see samples of students' hands-on STEM work. As I said in the beginning, we wanted to make this distant learning experience, although different, have some of the same experiences for our students. So we've had material pickups throughout the year aligned to STEM projects that students can do. And these are some of the examples I've had this year. You see Chinapas built in seventh grade science. These students built them at school or at home, depending if they were on a pod. The Mars Rover was excited about. They built Mars Rover, which relies their seventh grade science. Right now, they're building volcanoes at school. So we've got, me and Mr. Huerta were able to visit classes and see it. It was awesome. So like, they put the computer down for a second, which, you know, it's great to see. And they're, they're stirring the clay to make the mold for the volcanoes. They're making volcanoes. And they're making mistakes. They're learning, but it's awesome, because it's a two-day project, and it's going to lead to another digital, it's going to lead to a project. So the hands-on, that leads to the digital project, which leads to a writing assignment. So. So the purple circles have videos behind them, so the school board can be able to see on their own. But that's, that's been our journey this year. We are excited and looking forward to getting more students on campus in the coming weeks. And we look forward to engaging our kids, family, and community towards the come of the future. Thank you.
Thank you for that update. There's a lot going on at MIT and at North Star. This is great. I did want to clarify for the audience, because it did come up in the chat. At each of the last several board meetings, we've gotten an update from different schools. I think we had three schools on the first meeting, three schools on the second one, and two tonight. So my understanding is, Dr. Baker, you're showcasing each of the school, schools and kind of where they've been at this last year and where we're heading. So anyway, just for the audience, if your school isn't represented tonight, we either already heard from it, or we will be hearing from it. So you could check in with your principal on that. Anyway, so board members, any questions or comments for our wonderful principals and the schools that we heard from tonight?
Looks like really, really good things are happening at both schools. I guess one, one question I had for Sarah at North Star is the in-person is in the afternoon. Is that? I can't remember. Was that just because of the splitting of the cohorts, or was that because of traffic with MIT?
It was, there was a lot of factors, but largely it was because they wanted to keep the academic content continuous in the morning. So they didn't want to have to split time. Basically, they didn't want to give up their time with the teacher. And so with doing this, everyone still gets classes from eight to noon every day. And then the afternoon, it's just depending on which cohort you're in.
Great, thanks.
And it did help with traffic with Nick, so.
It's not been bad. It's been okay.
Yeah, it is.
Thanks for sharing this, the, the project site. They were, they were fun to watch. I like Newton's Third Law. There was an example of.
Yeah.
If you've seen it, you know what I'm talking about.
Yes, I have. Yeah, you got to dig to find some of them. So I'm pretty, a lot of stuff in there.
I would also like to thank both Nick and Sarah for all their wonderful leadership and the teachers for helping our students during this time. I really love the projects that kids are making. I was just thinking back when McKinley just had computers, and we were doing Word and, you know, a couple of things. And now look at the Mars Rover. It's just amazing. So I'm really happy to see that all these great things are happening for our students. And thanks to everybody that had a hand in it. I'm really excited to see that this is going on.
Thank you. And it's, we give it to the teachers and they knock it out the park. They're the ones doing a lot of the work. Thank you.
And yes, so thank you again, both principals and all your staff. I do always enjoy seeing that the enrichment classes are fun for the kids so that we can keep them engaged. So again, thank you for everything that you guys are doing.
And I'll just echo all of what my colleagues have said. And Sarah, I really appreciate the focus on social emotional. Right now, I think that's more important than anything at this point for our kiddos. And it's really great to see all the things that are going on in the campuses. It's so good for our kids and our staff to be back on campus and in person. It's been, it's been a good change, and I'm happy to see what's happening at the school site.
And Sarah and Nick, thank you so much for your weekly, how should I say this, presentations to your community. They're great. They are really outstanding. I know we're all invited to watch them. You both do an outstanding job with your communities, communities and your kids. Nick, yours was hilarious, the time that they were, each grade level was getting something and you were demonstrating it. What their, what their, the project was for, you know, this around. So that, that, that really, you know, gives a lot of great pressure to, and also parents, and just the teachers also. A great shout out.
Thanks, sir. Dr. Baker, did you see the one where I'm cooking? That's my favorite.
I did see the one. I have to try that.
That was your holiday one, wasn't it? Because I saw that one. That was great.
So I think it's, when you're having fun, I think, when you, we remove our, like, our suits and we, you know, I think that's, remove that shield, you know, we go. I think, I think it's, it's fun. I, we stole that idea from Miss Kekos years ago. I mean, Shackel have taken it to the, taken it to the moon.
I know. I've, I've seen, I've seen the Shackle in all your different crazy hair and pajama day and other days. And you're just right in there giving your, your presentation.
I love it. And it's fun with Nick. We, we bounce off each other. So it's, it's a great partnership.
All right. Well, thank you so much for being here with us tonight. We really appreciate it. And you're welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to, you know, get ready for tomorrow. I'm sure you've got a few things to do. All right, Dr. Baker, I know we have more, so I'll turn it back over to you.
Start with our report. So Kyle, the next slide, please. So these are the updates, and I'm sure everyone is very interested in these updates. So let me start with. So what I wanted to talk about first is the employee vaccine updates. And so I don't know if it was the last board, it probably was the last board meeting that we talked about the vaccines that were going to be distributed to educators within San Mateo County. And so there was priorities, with a priority one A, a one B, a priority two, a priority three. So what we, as the twenty-fourth superintendents, including the county superintendent, came up with, was criteria for each of these priorities and how the vaccine would be distributed in San Mateo County to our educators. And by educators, I mean everyone that works in a school district. So we each had a spreadsheet to complete. Some of us had more names and positions to put on it than other districts. And then it was a priority according to those districts, we had the most unduplicated students in their district. By unduplicated, talks that refers to English language learners, students on free and reduced lunch, special needs students, homeless students, and others. So when it comes down to the list for districts, we were number six, with Ravenswood being number one. Other districts, you know, before us and some after us. So what happened today is that we, it started today with the school districts in San Mateo County. So you will see in priority one A, there are thirty-six educators, and those are educators who are teachers and instructional assistants who work in the special day classes that are working in person. Priority one B is, we have three hundred and twenty that are working in person. These are our teachers, our instructional assistants, our classified staff that works on site when the students are in person. It also refers to the administrators that are on site, occupational therapists, our speech language pathologists. All those people are in one B. One A and one B all received invitations to sign up for the vaccination today. And that took place starting, I believe, at nine o'clock and went until like five thirty. You'll see me kind of looking at my other screen, because I'm watching for emails coming from the county superintendent. And she just sent us an email indicating that out of the group, which is, which is party number one A or one B, there were seven percent that there were no shows today. So there's going to be, they're sending out another thousand invites for Friday to pick up those shows. And if they do not, then move down the list. So I just want to say to our employees who are watching tonight, who are listening to this call or watching this meeting too. If you're one of these that received an invite, and maybe you went somewhere else to get the vaccine, to let us know right away so we can take you off the list, so they don't think you're a no-show. So with that being said, you'll see that there were an additional one hundred and seven employees that have reported. That's throughout the district have reported they already have an appointment or have been vaccinated elsewhere. That could be at the FEMA location at the Oakland Coliseum. That could be at the FEMA location at the Oakland Coliseum, which is vaccinating educators in Sammentail County, Alameda County, and also, I believe, in Santa Clara County. So that is, is taking place. I didn't talk about priority two, which starts up next week. And priority two is for people that are at the school sites that are not working directly with students, these would be our teachers who are using their classrooms at the school site. It could also be district office staff that can go under this priority that would receive an invite. And then priority three is for all employees within the Redwood City School District that are working remotely. So the vaccines are definitely here. We have been informed that there will be an uptick of additional doses, dosages coming and that to increase the number of vaccines given each week, Kaiser and Sutter Health will start being part of this project. And we will notify, it's not, not the district, but the county office actually sent a direct email to the employee for them to suck. So this is where we are with this vaccine at this point in time. Are there any questions from the board members? Right away, this slide.
Dr. Baker, do you know, when, when they get their first vaccine, are they automatically scheduled for their second dose or how is that going to work?
Yes, they are, they're scheduled for the second.
Okay.
Interesting, over the weekend, I saw, I saw some of our, on social media, some of our teachers, and they were holding up their, their card, they got their vaccine and showed, yep, here's my other, my next date, which they held that. And so I was really excited to see the vaccine is here. We're definitely moving down that pathway to get everyone vaccinated.
This is a huge step. I've been so excited to see the, the social media pictures of everybody getting their vaccines. It's gonna, it's gonna be great.
Yes.
Dr. Baker, there's a question, a comment that I think probably some people have. I think you may have said it, but maybe not. Which group do the custodians and the groundkeepers fall into?
The custodians that are on site are in priority one B. They're on site, working for their kids, the custodians that are on site. Now, if you're a maintenance, an operation worker, those who work through the facilities departments, so they go from site to site depending on the type of work, they are in the priority two.
And, and I think this list also includes, it's, it's our employees that we hire, but then did we also put in some of our after-school provider folks? Yeah, as well, who are working with our kids, like the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club.
Are also our, the care providers that we have some of our sites, the care providers who are in care and I think they're in two.
That's great, that's great. All right, board members, other, yeah, other questions or comments?
No idea, there's a question, what vaccine? I don't know. So.
Oh.
Any other questions?
I think we're just all so happy that it's finally here for our educators and our school staff. So this is, this is wonderful news. It's been a really good month news-wise with all sorts of additional scientific data coming out and vaccines and us moving from purple to red zone. It's all good news, moving in the right direction. Okay, so I know you have more to go over.
That's true. So we can go on to the next slide. So as you see, we, as you just said, Elisa, we are now in the red two. And because of that, you know that Sammentail County now shows the Justin Case Rate today, or actually yesterday, a 5.6, which is well below that 7.0 that we needed. And then also there's a 2.1% positivity rate and a 3.7% health benefit rate. So we are below where we need to be in this county. So we are in the red. So what we're going to talk about tonight, part of this presentation is coming back, coming back to school. So I met with the principals today, myself and cabinet, met with the principals. We rolled out this presentation, we received feedback. And so I want to tell you a bit about how we're going to re-enter. So you know, within our 12 schools, there is some type of in-person taking place. In some schools, it's more than other schools. I have some schools which I have maybe one grade level in person. I have a school where there is no grade level in person. So within this next, well, actually, we're meeting again tomorrow with the principals. Within this next week, I would like some of our schools with the least amount in person to start working very closely with their teachers and to start working very closely with their parents on what it would look like to reopen, some beginning within the weeks of March 8th, the weeks of March 15th. If I can get a grade level, if you've already got K, then let's start on one. Let's start in second grade and see who we can get. If I cannot get a teacher because they're not willing to come back at this point in time, and Wendy will go into that with the survey in a couple of slides, then I need to put a substitute teacher in place. So that is happening and going to take place with some more work tomorrow with some of our principals. Between April 8th and 12th, I want to bring back preschool to fifth grade students back in person. This is based, would be based on a parent survey that I'm going to need some information. Why do I need that information? Because I knew, I know I have parents that are not returning their children to us yet. They've already said, quite articulate about that's not going to happen for my family. My own orthodontist, who has his children here in the Redwood City School District and really gives us accolades, and I went to see him last week for an adjustment of retainer, said, John, I'm not sending my children back. I can't because, you know, I run my own business. And I know even though you're doing a great job, you have all the PPE and you're testing the kids, you're testing the teachers, but every now and then I see a class quarantine because it's either a student that's tested positive or an adult, even though there's no transmission rates in school, I have to quarantine and I can't close my business because my wife and I run my business. So we, I need to find out that information, who's not coming back and who still is maintaining instruction virtually. And then we're exploring what sixth through eighth grade options would look like to. The district, by the district, it's those of us that work at the district, it's, it's, Wendy, Kelly, it's Liz Wolf, it'll be Linda Monfils, she's been very crucial and working very closely with the hub guest teachers. What is, what are these schedules going to look like when we come back? We have to still continue with asynchronous learning on Wednesday because that's the time that teachers are going to plan, especially if they are having an AM group and a PM. And the big piece is we need to start a new MOU with our teachers association. I know Wendy's going to do a great job with that. I plan on being there. Matter of fact, Wendy's invited me, so I'm looking forward to it so that we can get this off the ground and, and start bringing kids back. So we're in the midst of it right now. We will continue to bring updates to our community. And I will be going to certain school sites to work with the principals to see what we can do, especially at those school sites where I have maybe only one grade level or I have no grade level whatsoever, to get something moving, especially during the weeks in March. Questions from the board on this slide?
I would say we could take questions and comments if you want. Go ahead, Janet.
Well, I was going to ask Dr. Baker, just for the audience, can you remind everybody why the sixth through eighth grade is a little bit trickier? And there's a couple of questions in the chat about that.
Yeah, a little trickier. You know, I know that our high school is starting to work on a plan of how should we bring kids back. Because our, our sixth through eighth grade, especially the two middle schools that I learned also at K8, that the kids are always moving and changing classrooms. And so with that being the case, and then also with the social distancing, going from classroom to classroom, we have to explore what that would look like. The other piece that is a bit crucial is that at some of our school sites, there are teachers who have credentials just in one subject area, so they can only teach that one subject and then the kids will go to their group. So we're exploring what our neighbors are doing. We have, we have some neighbors that have sixth, eighth grade coming to school, but say what they're working with right now is, for example, there's, the children are getting math one day per week and maybe they're getting English language development one day per week. And so, so they're not getting the other courses in person, they're getting them virtually. So we need to see what that will look like so that we can follow those guidelines that are still put in place by the CDC and also followed by the Sammentail County Health Department. Wendy, did you want to address it in any other manner in terms of scheduling? For sixth through eighth, that is a bit complicated more than just for our, for our teachers who are preschool to fifth that have.
Yes, you made a really good point, John, about the credentialing, especially with schools that have two home rooms at sixth grade or at seventh grade or eighth grade. Those are easy, easier, I should say, to manage or just dealing with moving from class to class. However, when there are three classrooms at each grade level, usually we have teachers that are teaching a sixth grade class and a seventh grade class and so forth. So it's just more complex scheduling. However, we have very motivated principals. So I know once they get their thinking caps on and we have our committee formed that will come up with a few recommendations, which is right around the corner, that good progress will be made. So we hope to update the board at the next meeting.
Any other questions from the board?
Do you have more to present on this topic? I'm just not, I'm trying to figure out what, what we're going to be seeing later to decide.
So what I need to, well, let me go through the slides and then my big noise.
Yeah, that might, that might be helpful because, yeah, that, great, thanks.
Kyle, if you can go on to the next one. And this is about the survey that we gave out prior to the break. And it was due yesterday at five o'clock, so I'm going to let Wendy take this.
Right, thank you, John. So once again, we have surveys. I know many people are not enjoying surveys these days. However, as we progress into the spring and we are looking at new opportunities to bring more children back, we are, it's necessary for us to have these surveys. And so I'll first talk about the parent survey. We are going to have site principals send out parent surveys, work with their parents, call parents to find out if their, if their interests have changed or are interested in having more of an in-person experience, like a hybrid model or what have you, depending on options that we have in scheduling for April. So April is our target date, as John mentioned, to have the, certainly preschool through fifth grade back. And with that, we will need to know from parents whether or not it is imperative that they have the, their students back on campus or if they still wish to continue in a distance learning model. So principals will be the point person to work with their communities on this. And once that information occurs and is collected and analyzed, then the appropriate schedules can be formed, the site council and so forth, similar to how we did in November, but with a higher percentage, I'm hoping. And then we will also be sending out a separate survey to parents about next year. And some of you may have mentioned, remembered that I mentioned in October that this is the hiring season, this is the time we enroll, this is the time we make estimations for next school year so that we can properly staff and have, have everyone properly in place. So for next year, we need to know from parents, will they be returning in person to their site or will they be enrolling in a district-wide, English-only virtual academy in August? And John will be speaking about that a little bit later. So those will be the two options for August specifically. So I just want to make sure I'm clear. Two surveys will go out, one to manage the spring and an April return. And then the second one will be from the district regarding being in person or attending a district-wide virtual academy, not at school sites, but rather a district-focused one. So Dr. Baker will speak about that in a minute. Then secondly, we just finished a teacher survey regarding how teachers are feeling in our CTA about returning after the whole vaccination process. And it's really a six-week process. So the first vaccination, four weeks later, the second, and then a two-week period. So Kyle, could you move to the next slide, please? Thank you. So I want to say thank you again to RCTA. I'm so impressed when they answer my surveys, they do such a great job, over 90% response rate, and they even sent it after three o'clock, right before the mid-winter break. So thank you again to all the teachers that really helped us with this information. And I'll show you on the next slide, that 78.8% of RCTA teachers stated they would return in person either now or with the vaccination process completed or the fact that they're already working in person with students because we have so many students back. Kyle, next slide. So this was the chart from the survey itself. And these are the data points I just mentioned. So just so you know, 33 pre-K through fifth grade classroom teachers stated they would not return in person in April if they were vaccinated due to a variety of reasons. So principals are going to talk through these situations because some people on the survey had questions like, you know, could I order a certain PPE if I wanted? And, or I might be concerned about my child's school schedule or something like that. So there are a variety of reasons. So principals will be talking to their own staff about, you know, any concerns they might have or manage any misinformation. The remaining 44 teachers stated that they would not return after the vaccination process or either out-of-classroom teachers or sixth through eighth grade teachers. So out of 400 teachers, we're feeling pretty positive that we can accommodate certain situations, interactive process or medical concerns or what have you. But yet then everyone else could return assumingly. So this chart was really great to see, really positive in our efforts to return and have more students on campus. Next slide, please. Okay, and before John starts, I am very excited about working on a new MOU with our CTA. I reached out to the union, so we're expecting a date soon. John alluded to that already. And currently, our current MOU is from January to June, which is why I will need to have a new one because there's now been changes. As we know, we've been changing all along and the new big change is this additional layer of protection. So we want to make sure we have an MOU that really rectifies and shows where we're heading and progressing into the following year. John?
So this is the planning for the 21, 2021, 22 school year. So we are going to have a district committee to develop proposed schedules based on the health guidelines. Right now, the health guidelines from the CDC and which Sammentail County Health is following still mentions a six-foot distance that we are utilizing in our classrooms that are in person at this point in time. It is our hope that that number of feet that we need to distance will be less, like three. You're probably wondering, why are you worried about the six-feet distance? Well, in Redwood City, you know, our class size is anywhere from 28 to 30 and sometimes 31. With six feet distance in a classroom, the most we can put in a classroom is 15 students at this point in time. And that's really taken a lot of furniture outside of the classroom, bookcases, shelves, closets, so forth, to make up for that, for that. for that requirement. So in, in doing so, I see in the chat where you want to know what is going to happen. Is it going to be full-time? Is it going to be two days? Is it whatever other questions you may have? In-person instruction will definitely occur on a daily basis. But what that looks like, what the schedule is going to look like, it's going to be predicated on the guidelines that we're going to have to follow. If we need to follow the guidelines as they are right now with the six-feet distance, then it's going to probably be, this is one, one manner of how you can do it, as some schools are doing right now, having an AM group and then break for like 30, 35 minutes and then have a PM group. That's to accommodate that distance. If we don't have to do that and say we can come back just like we were before, because if you listen to the science, read the research, mirror what other schools are doing in other countries, they brought back their classrooms as they were prior to the virus. And it's been very little disturbance whatsoever. Making sure you have all your mitigation processes in place. And we do, we have the masking, which is definitely going to still be a pillar that we're going to have to do. The health and hygiene is a pillar we're going to have to do. The one, the social, the gatherings, the social-type gatherings, number of what that will look like, we're still going to have to adhere to that pillar. But the pillar with the social distancing is the one we really need to have looked at. As superintendents, we have asked our county superintendent to work closely with Samhain County Health Department to see if that is still needed for us. There are the CDC, they are recommendations, they are recommendations, they are guidelines, they're not mandates. If the county can say those are recommendations, we feel that you can go back as you were because all of the other pieces are in place. We have seen that the schools that are open at this point in time for in-person learning, for the testing of students that those parents allow us to test them every other week, and the testing of our staff every other week. And even if there is a positive case, there has been no transmittal throughout the school. So everything is done really, really well, right, and very well. I know there was an issue about some masks not being in kindergarten, kindergarten teachers were unable to get them. We have them, we have them. You just need to get a hold of the principal, get a hold of the custodian. All the PPE is at the school. So when you look at this chart here, as I said, there'll probably be some, some parents who will still want the distance learning for whatever reason. We need to know who that is, and then this will be a virtual academy for the year. And you have to have your commitment to do that. The in-person instruction is for a bilingual program. Our, our English-only programs with the majority, majority of them are Mandarin and Spanish immersion. And a survey is going to be going out in a couple of weeks for the 2021, 22 school year. And the reason why it's not going out tomorrow or Friday is because these other surveys from your individual school sites regarding coming back possibly in March or the April piece, I need those to go out first, and they will be going out after our meeting tomorrow with the principal to determine what day of the week we can get those out hopefully next week with a short turnaround time. And as I said previously, there are a few sites that have very limited in-person instruction. I need those sites to look at things differently and let's see who we can get started during the month of May, during the month of March, I'm sorry. The other sites that are quite robust with their in-person learning at this point in time, they will most likely be sending out their survey a little later in the next couple of weeks about coming back. Questions?
Is this the end of the presentation, Dr. Baker?
The next one is discussion.
Okay, great. All right. So we can open it up to board comments and questions. And I also do have some speaker cards, one, two, three, four, five, I think, speakers as well. So why don't we start with the board, see what kind of questions or comments you have, and then we can open it up to the speakers?
Start. This is good. I'm glad to see the vaccination coming and, and the plan coming in there. I also want to say, I realize how, I know we talk about in-person and sometimes it feels like maybe we're not acknowledging all the hard work that's going on for the distance learning, and I want to make sure that that's appreciated, but, but it's time. You know, it's really time to get back in person. I think Nick said it really well. We got to get everyone back. Dr. Baker, you're right, not everyone's going to choose to come back, but we need, we need to be heading in that direction. You know, I'm not a health expert, probably many of us aren't, but, but you know, I do look to health experts to help me form a decision or an opinion, and I look to the science and data, and they're the ones that say, you know, you can bring people back into school now. I think that's a big difference than what we knew so many months ago. We didn't have the data to support it. Assistant Superintendent Wolf sent around a video in one of the teachers' newsletters that really talks about this from Dr. Noble. And there were a couple of salient points in there that really resonated with me. So I just thought I'd share them. One was that, you know, first you reflect back to March in 2020 and said, you know, what we thought then was that driving factor of COVID was going to be kids, schools were going to be super-spreaders, it was going to be really bad. What we know now from the science is that that's just not true. Kids aren't the driving factor. Masking is the mitigation strategy that really, really fixes this and points to studies that have been going, you know, that, that have run, that have been published on the CDC site showing that students can come back safely, they can do it without the in-school transmission, same experience we're having here. And that you can, you know, you can do that, and this is all pre-vaccine. The CDC, she also talks about the study about the double masking and how it raises the effectiveness of a mask from, say, 70 to 80% effective to 95-plus percent, which is as good or better than the vaccines. And that's the mitigation that can come in today. I thought it was a really informative video and really comforting, and I'm glad that it was put in there. And the other comment is, is that, you know, was asked, there's 15 pages of Q and A from the educators that were on the webinar asking, and so there are a lot of detailed answers that weren't answered in the webinar. Another one that came up was, you know, just should we wait for the vaccine because it's around the corner? And, you know, her answer was, it's not medically necessary. And so I think when you're saying, hey, we can get teachers back in March, and we should be pushing for that for some sites, I think that's, that's a great direction. Vaccine is definitely another layer. I'm not, I'm not arguing against it. I'm really glad that, that, that we've done this work to get the educators in. And, and that's the way that, you know, and that we'll get them back in April. I think that's outstanding. But I think that for those that want to come back in March, that can do it in March, it's been shown by science and, and data and our experience here that it can be done safely. And so I'm glad that's being worked on here. I know that you have an MOU to negotiate. Looking at the timelines, I would expect that at the next board meeting, we'll be hearing about the completion of that MOU. And, you know, and that we can bring certainty because the one thing I've realized from news coverage, from talking from parent, with parents and, you know, just managing my own kids, is that certainty really makes navigating through this schedule, this, this, you know, everything that's going on, having some certainty about when it will happen is just critical. And so the faster we can get to certainty, even if it means like, yeah, it's going to be April, not March, but getting to certainty, I think for me, has got to be a top priority. So thanks for working on it. I know that, I know you're all working really hard on it, and I can't, I can't say enough for the, the direction that we're heading in.
Well, that's really hard to follow. I think Mike said it best. It's time. It's safe. We can do this. For those of you maybe in the audience may have seen, I've had my Dr. Fauci bobblehead at every single one of our meetings because we follow the science, we listen to the research. If you haven't found him, he's right here tonight. You know, we can do this. We've, we've shown with our own data in our own district that we can do this safely, that, that the virus is not spreading in, in our classrooms. And so having this extra layer of protection with the vaccine is really exciting. And I want to see us get back into the classroom. So excited to see that MOU, Wendy and Dr. Baker. Thanks.
And I would also agree with Janet that Mike is hard to follow after what he said. But having listened to all the, you know, science and discussions from parents, I think that personally, I feel that with the vaccine, we really don't have any more excuses as to why we can't return. Nothing is 100%. It's like, you know, you get a cold and you get the flu shot, you still get a cold. Well, that may be happening, but I feel pretty confident that we have all the other safety precautions in place. And if it's not happening at a particular site, please let us know so that we can fix it. Nothing is perfect, but we learn from every day. And you know, when we first started, this has been hard on everyone. And I want to thank the teachers and all the staff members, the custodians, the kitchen people, everybody, the office, the people that drive around. Everybody has pitched in to make it work, and I think we are ready to take the next step. And I really would like us to get ready and set that date, as Mike said. It's really hard for people to plan, and I understand that, you know, some people may not want to return, and that's okay. We are a district of choice. People have that choice. So that's for the parents. However, as a staff member, there are different choices there as well, not some that we may like if we are hesitant about the vaccine. But I think that we need to get moving in this direction, and I'm looking forward to getting the MOU all done and moving forward and seeing more children on our sites. And thanks, everybody, for all you're doing so far.
Cecilia, you're muted.
Sorry, I don't know what happened. So yeah, Mike said it just perfect. I am happy to see that a lot of teachers are willing to come back, like Wendy mentioned, now or without vaccine or after. So the fact that the vaccine is here and everybody is getting ready to get their dose and get back into the classroom is just wonderful for a lot of the parents and teachers in our district. The, one clarification for Dr. Baker would be when we talk about coming back as the universal distance learning, will those universal distance learning be taught by Redwood City teachers or guest teachers?
Are you speaking when we return in the fall? Are you speaking when we return in a March, April?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Are you referring to when we return in the fall or return March, April?
In the fall.
In the fall, it's in-person learning. If, if only in-person learning with the exception of the virtual academy for those parents who choose the virtual academy. It could be some of our own teachers or it could be guest teachers. It depends on the number of parents who decide that they want to attend the virtual academy for one year. What does that look like? The number, how many students, and then how many teachers do we have that have indicated they do not want to return fall? Are there a same number of teachers that can coincide with the number of virtual classrooms that people have? So we'll have to see about that, how members play out.
Great, thank you. That was it for me.
All right. Well, thank you very much for the presentation tonight and all the progress that's gone on. I know we've been talking about this at every board meeting we've had this year, as well as lots of other committee meetings and individual meetings that we've had with Dr. Baker and Wendy and others. So this is just great news. I think like Mike and my colleagues, you know, my feeling is, we already know the science, particularly for our pre-K through sixth graders, says that, you know, it's safe to come back now with or without the vaccine. We know the vaccine is one more level of protection, and I know that many of our teachers, you know, really want that, many of our staff want that. Of course, we all want the vaccine, or most of us want the vaccine when it's available to us. So I think it's great that we're moving in that direction. So our current MOU does allow for any teacher who would like to come back in person to come back tomorrow, basically. I mean, with some planning, obviously, it wouldn't happen tomorrow, but they need to work with their principal and with Wendy Kelly and Dr. Baker. But so our current MOU does allow for that. So I know there were some questions in the chat. So the additional MOU that we're talking about negotiating, hopefully, we'll have a final product by our next board meeting, as Mike said. That would be more defined about really the requirement of coming back with whatever conditions we come up with in the MOU. So it would be another MOU that really gets more people back. And so that will be negotiated. That's part of California law that we do negotiate working conditions with our staffs or with our teachers. So is that right, Wendy? Just want to make sure I'm legally saying that correctly. So anyway, and I do want to just say, you know, thank you to our teachers and all of our staff, our classified staff, our administrators, everybody, because, you know, if you look at our district, actually, you know, we have had in-person going on since the fall this year. Very proud of that. There are some school districts around us that have had nothing. I mean, not one student on campus. So we have had in-person. So I really appreciate our staff and everybody working on that to get us to the point where we are today. So, and the next phase really sounds exciting. So this is, this is all great news. And I won't repeat everything that everybody said as to the why, but, Dr. Baker, are you trying to jump in or?
Just one more thing, you know, there's, there's some teachers, I think, that, you know, are in-person right now. They want to know how that new MOU is going to have effect. It really won't have an effect on them. So this new MOU is because we are opening up. They have been in-person, but this is opening up in-person at a total. So I just want to clarify that. Wendy, did you, did you want to address that in fashion?
Yes, thank you. And huge thank you to all of the teachers. I know all these personal choices have been difficult this year. However, I do want to address the question about those that are currently in-person. You have already fulfilled parts of the MOU about returning in person, and so I'm not expecting any type of real change for you or really addressing those that are now distance learning or distance teaching, I should say, and, or possibly distance learning too. And, and then coming back, just so we can really meet the needs of our students and just in a different way, our typical ways that we have been that have been very successful in the past, and recognizing the hard work that's been done so far this year. So that's why, because of this change in the vaccination, this additional layer of protection, we have a sense of urgency to make modifications in our current MOU for that section specifically. Thank you.
Great. All right. And I know there was a lot All right. And I know there was a lot of chat questions and comments. Some of which we're addressing and those that we don't get to, we can try to cover at the next board meeting or Dr. Baker can answer some of those in his weekly superintendent email if we get to those. But I think we've answered a lot of those. We do have some speakers. So why don't we take those and then we can do any final comments before we move on to the next agenda item. So Kyle, if you want to call up Cameron Hoffman, that would be great. And then if you can let me share my screen, I'll get the timer up. All right, Cameron, are you with us?
See if I can see.
Should be available.
Okay, I think I see her.
In the chat, she needs to be unmuted.
Okay, can you hear me out?
Yeah, hi, welcome.
Thank you. So thank you to the board members and the district administration. I want to speak first to the board members who spoke decisively in favor of reopening and reopening soon. I appreciate your comments deeply and look forward to seeing actions back up those words. Specifically like to say that I appreciate Mr. Wells in setting a MOU deadline. I think that's a huge step in the right direction to have deadlines and hopefully accountability that follows on to it. With respect to some of the other presentation, I would like to point out particularly to the district administration that California Assembly Chairman Phil Ting said that districts that it remains closed are tone deaf about school reopenings. And particularly the urgency of reopening. And so I just would like to suggest to the administration that future tense about you happen now, phrases like I hope and expecting a date soon and target date. Those reflect way more passivity than the parent community would want to see towards reopening. I also wanted to point out that the county, the San Mateo County pandemic framework to which the district frequently points parents has actually defined reopening. And it says specifically that a school has not reopened if, quote, all students in at least one grade did not have the option to return to in-person. So I'm very heartened to hear this this tone shift in our board for reopening. Because when I went through school by school, the public reopening plans relative to the classroom disclosures in Redwood City School District. At the elementary level, only Taft has reopened as defined by the county. So we have one school meeting that definition of reopened while the remainder of students remain in in distance learning and and by the math and we've asked the district for more transparency and data, it hasn't necessarily come. I think that's around 1,800 students in TK to second who are still in distance learning. So it's way too many to still be passive. The last thing I'd like to point out is that vaccines are available now as reflected by the 102 people who, you know, staff who've already taken advantage of them. They've been available for over a week to teachers and staff. And if we should be helping our district and our principals should be helping and the district itself to teachers to get those and to be able to complete the cycle before spring break so that it's easier to come back. Because we all love our teachers and we want them to be as safe as possible, but we want to come back. So I would conclude by by saying as as Mr. Wells and Ms. Lawson said, it's time. I would say it's past time and Redwood City needs to reopen the schools at the district level on the return from spring break. And please act with urgency and decisiveness and and think about that tone deaf and and speak with conviction. We we are all ready to do this together. Let's get it done.
All right, thank you. Our next speaker is Allison Olford.
I don't seem to see that person in the list.
All right, let's go to the next speaker and we'll see if Allison, if Allison, if you're here under a different name, why don't you? Oh, okay. Thank you. Did you see that, Kyle? There's a Roy Cloud PTO.
Yeah, I just enabled.
Great, thank you.
Hi there. Sorry, I must have been longed in to Zoom with the wrong account. I just wanted to, I wanted to follow up first on a request that I've already sent to Dr. Baker and this board. Requesting to publish a regular reopening dashboard that gives our community clearer visibility into our reopening status. Similar to what Cameron was saying before. I think this accountability is important because our district is technically considered open. But we have very few students actually receiving in-person instruction. And we keep hearing this claim that we have thousands of students back on campus. But we all know that on campus is not the same thing as learning in person. So the dashboard would be a great way to show a time lapse breakdown of how many students are actually being served in each model, right? So whether fully in-person and hybrid and distance learning. And when these numbers start to change meaningfully and you see them in this in this dashboard. Then then we can truly say that we're making progress in this reopening. I'd also like to shift gears and say, like, as a parent, to echo what the board has been saying, I'd like to actually express my gratitude to all the teachers and administrators and staff who have been supporting in-person instruction at our schools, even without vaccines. I can just say thank you and I hope that the vaccine gives you guys all greater peace of mind. The same as I hope it gives many, many other teachers newfound courage to return to their classrooms as soon as possible. And finally, I want to speak to any parents and also probably teachers out there that have kind of given up on this idea of returning students to classrooms this school year. I'm in some circles, this argument has kind of shifted that, oh, it's not worth the effort to change things up so late in the school year or switching to hybrid would be too disruptive. And to these people, my personal reasons, I'd like to express as a parent of three kids in the district is that it's worthwhile first because we know the mental health benefits will be profound for our students. Also because getting our kids off their screens for even a fraction of the school day will be a huge win. And finally, it will present an opportunity for more teachers and our families to get comfortable being back on campus with this kind of quote unquote new normal and all these new safety protocols so that we can work out any kinks. And the key is so that we can start off stronger in the fall. So thank you.
Thank you, Allison. All right. And our next speaker, oh, and Allison, I did want to say that we did get your email and I know that Dr. Baker was looking into the kind of dashboard that you requested. And I know he's thinking about, I don't know if you have a response at this point or.
We looked at her dashboard. We have to do something a bit different at this point in time. Jorge is looking at it and then we also.
Yeah.
Great.
It may be it's going to be, it will not be mirrored, Allison. It's going to be something that's going to be easy for us to handle on a weekly and somewhat of a daily basis. We have to get the information every day and then give you the percentages.
Any any regular visibility is huge. I mean, a step in the right direction.
Great. Okay, thank you. So our next speaker is Mary Beth Maloney.
Hello, thank you so much. And thank you to Superintendent Baker and the board and everyone. This is incredibly welcome news to hear on, just to echo what Cameron and Allison said, though, it is, it's clear that we need to have a very crisp tonal shift as well as visibility and accountability as to how this moves forward. I am concerned that when we get to the actual implementation, that things stall again and that we don't have a sense of a real vision and creativity to address getting our students back on campus for in-person learning as well as, of course, taking, you know, consideration of the real health concerns and and simply administrative concerns that go into an effort like this. We can do it. The parent community is here to help. Let us help. But thank you again for for taking, I think, a very significant and real step forward. That said, that really only applies to one of my children, which is my third grader at Roy Cloud. I also have a sixth grader and I am disappointed to hear that there's not more of a concrete proposal for getting our middle school, middle school students back on campus. Even perhaps if it's not in an in a in-person learning situation. But some way that they can come on campus, that they can start to rebuild their sense itself, their connection to their education and their connection to their community. I think that we need to be thinking outside the box, how to solve for our middle school students if we cannot get them back on campus. And that's not to say that we shouldn't make that our priority goal. We should get them back on campus and in in-person learning, but we cannot put them to the side. It is such a crucial time in their life and their and their understanding of who they are and their sense of education and well-being so that they can have that engagement with their teachers and with their peers. So I would ask you, as as the district embarks to bring our kids back on campus. Bring our tweens and our teens back on campus as well. And please make every effort to do so. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you, Mary Beth, for that comment. I do know that Dr. Baker is having conversations with staff about what schedules might look like for our middle school students. It would look most likely different than it does look for a more contained classroom like you have pre-K through fifth grade. But I do know there's conversations about that. So stay tuned and hopefully we'll have some good information on that in the next, you know, couple of weeks along with everything else. So thanks. Let's see, the next speaker is Mercedes Kowalski. And Mercedes has been helpful all along the way. Thank you for providing lots of good data this whole last year.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, go ahead, welcome.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mercedes Kowalski and I'm a child and adolescent psychiatrist at Palo Alto Medical Foundation. I have spoken at these meetings before, back in July, August, September, October and November to share my professional perspective on how distance learning negatively impacts students. Sadly, the mental health struggles of children in our community that I've spoken about previously have not changed. In fact, things have only gotten worse in spite of our teachers' heroic efforts during challenging times. We've seen a staggering increase in anxiety, depression, oppositional behaviors, suicidality, poor school participation and attendance, academic decline and abuse in our community. And it's only getting worse. And again, I reiterate that these issues are worsening in spite of our teachers all working very hard and doing their best with an impossible challenge. The good news is recently, a lot of other things have changed. We understand the disease better and how to avoid transmission. We now have vaccines for many teachers and staff, many of whom have started receiving them this week. We have adequate quality PPE to keep our teachers and staff safe. We have support at the district, county and state level, including funding to reopen following the four pillars safely. We also have national experts, including the CDC, AAP and American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, stating it is safe and beneficial to return and that transmission rates within schools are minimal. Furthermore, our county is now in the red tier, hooray, and moving quickly towards orange. So our community rates are very low. This information is very encouraging and I implore the board to work with the teachers to move forward with reopening schools as soon as possible. This whole process has been a delicate balancing act of navigating teachers, staff and students' needs. It is clear at this point that the emotional, academic and behavioral toll that distance learning is taking on our students exceeds the risk to our teachers and staff of being on campus. We have strong data locally and nationally that teachers can return safely with appropriate protocols in place. The time is now. We need to start the process of giving every K through eight student the opportunity for in-person education right now. We are maybe weeks away from being in the orange tier. And this week, our daily county diagnosis rate was only one out of every 18,000 people and improving daily. Furthermore, almost a quarter of adults in San Mateo County have received at least one vaccine as of today. There's absolutely no reason why we can't safely have students back in class. It is imperative we return in some capacity early this spring so we can identify and troubleshoot issues that might arise and be fully prepared for full return in the fall. Every day that our kids are in the classroom leads to huge gains emotionally and academically. This past month, I have had the amazing privilege of seeing firsthand as students in neighboring school districts in our community return to campus. It is incredible to see the instantaneous improvement in affect mood and academic performance in these children simply because they're back in the classroom with their teachers. It's literally a night and day difference and brings tears to my eyes. The students in our district deserve the same opportunity. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mercedes, for your comments. Appreciate them. All right, Catherine Stewart.
Hi. I appreciate everyone else's opinion. My opinion is that until my kid has a vaccine against this, that I'm not putting him in with anybody else. I think that we should seriously look at having distance learning for schools of choice and actually having Mandarin immersion, having real Mandarin teachers as part of distance learning. They've been doing it so far and they can continue to do it if there's a will to do it. I realize other people feel that there's a minimal risk and there's a tolerable risk and that they're not worried about it, but I have one kid. And I'm not willing to risk any part of him. And I'm also not willing to risk doing anything early and messing with having the rest of my family or having other people that I know catch stuff because we accidentally spread it to someone. And I'm sorry if everyone else feels differently. I don't think everyone does, though. I think there are a lot of people who aren't willing to just throw their kid into the heap and hope that he turns out to be the lucky one. I'm not gambling with my kid's life. And I was willing to wait so that all the teachers had vaccines so they felt comfortable coming back. I hope they do feel comfortable. I hope the vaccines work. But I'm not going to send my kid back until my kid has a kid vaccine. We have vaccine lists for polio and smallpox and measles, mumps and rubella and all kinds of other stuff. There's no reason why we can't add to the required list of vaccines, having a COVID vaccine. And we really don't know about mutations. We don't know what's going to happen in the future. I hope everybody's well and I hope nobody loses a family member to this disease. So I hope that I'm wrong and I hope everyone else does really well, but I'm not taking any chances. Thank you very much. You can use the rest of my time.
I'm sorry, this, sometimes the whole experience on Zoom confounds me. Thank you, Catherine, for your comment. And I do think that you speak for some families, which is sort of what we're talking about. In terms of, you know, there's a whole puzzle that has to be put together in terms of there's students, you know, we heard from some of the parents tonight who really want their student back in person. We know there's a whole group that wants their kids back in person. We have, you know, we're doing coffee, the superintendent does coffees and I've been in a number of those and there are some families who feel very much like you. So, you know, we do need to look at it all and and make sure that we're providing education for all our students. So thank you for that feedback as well. I think Janet brought to my attention that Heidi, and I don't know if there's more than one Heidi in the chat who would like to speak. I will ask you, we'll go ahead and bring you up to speak, but if you could fill out the Google form. We want to make sure that we have your last name as well as keep track of who's speaking because we do put it in the minutes as well. And if there's any follow-up that needs to happen. So Kyle, can you find Heidi? And I know I saw, I. Okay, hand is raised. Thank you.
There's no speaker card.
Yeah, there's no speaker card. So I'm hoping that Heidi can fill that out. I don't have any more people in the speaker card, so I want to keep things moving.
Thank you, Alyssa. I wanted to jump on and I wasn't sure I was going to be able to make it, but I will fill out that speaker card. I just wanted to take a moment to pause and note that I've sat on every one of these board meetings for the last year. And I feel that the board's prior lack of guidance has instilled mistrust between our teachers and our parents, which is going to hurt our community for years. My hope has been renewed on this meeting and I hope we can continue to see this board be more proactive and start taking more action. We have let our kids down. Last fall, the board presented numbers that showed a large number of our children were not actively participating in distance learning. As schools in the district are semi-returning to school, we still have not seen an update on these numbers. And we can only hope and assume that these children are. and we can only hope and assume that these children are being provided for. It feels like these children are literally being left behind. Further, as Dr. Kuytzkowski noted, our children's mental health continues to decline as they become further disconnected from their community groups. We've also let our teachers down. Our teachers are working twice as hard and being half as effective. It is this board's responsibility to empower the schools in our district to create immediate policies and procedures that protect and support our teachers, staff, and children so that we can return to school safely in line with the CDC's guidelines. Teachers are essential for educating and caring for our children, and they cannot be successful at their jobs behind a screen for this long. Our districts are finding ways to bring teachers back safe. Other districts are finding ways to bring teachers back safely, and this district is celebrating a bare minimum of students on campus right now. Finally, we have let our community down. There's been very little substantive communication from this administration about our district's efforts. It's reactionary, and it doesn't provide our families with resources or expected plans. We are adding distance learning pods into the on-campus numbers, which is misleading. And we haven't conducted a parent or teacher survey in months. I don't envy your jobs, but we need leaders to stand up and take action during this unprecedented time. This board cannot please everyone with its decisions, as we've seen from the prior speakers, but it must start taking the hard, making the hard decisions. And I applaud the progress we have made today, and I'm really grateful for the movements that we have made forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the comments. And let's see, any other comments from the board?
Dr. Baker, I wanted to ask you a question to clarify. There's been the chat talk about the the fall and next school year. And I know you can't, we don't know exactly because we're still waiting on guidelines on the distancing. But when we're talking about bringing students back on campus, we're not talking about the initial hybrid that we talked about way back a year ago with two days on campus and three days in distance learning, correct? We're talking about
I don't want to go in that direction.
Right. So four, possibly five days on campus, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't want to do a week on and a week off. That's not working. So we need to get our kids back four or five days a week, whether it be, you know, in AM or PM. But, you know, as parents continue to talk about, you know, we need to come back, I totally agree with them. We're going in that direction, but we're going to need help to get that that social distancing to be less than six feet. We really need the help. So writing letters to legislature, writing letters to the county health department, and also writing letters to the county superintendent would be very helpful for all of us that are in this predicament at this point in time. Those of us that do not have the lower class sizes that are anywhere around 20 to 22 per classroom, we don't have that luxury.
All right. Okay, so I guess we'll head on to the next agenda item. 12.2, discussion on recently, on recent iReady diagnostic exam results.
Do you want me to just start? Dr. Baker, did you want to say anything?
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Okay, good evening. Board President McAvoy, members of the board, Dr. Baker, members of the community. I am going to share my screen. I hope. Okay, everybody can see this? Hearing nothing, I'm going to go right ahead. So I have a lot of data to show tonight, and I recognize that depending on the size of the screen, it may be very difficult to see. So I will be posting this slide deck as well as some charts into the chat when I'm through. I'm not able to do that right now. But I can, I will be sharing this data more broadly so that people can see it and study it. And then if you have any questions, you'd be happy to follow up. So this is our first presentation on data for this school year in terms of the students' academics. And I'm pleased to be able to bring some data forward. But before I do, I want to start with a caveat that this isn't perfect. This is, iReady is a new diagnostic assessment to our district. It's not new to our county, to our state, to the United States. A lot, a lot of people use iReady as an assessment as well as their their battery of tools that that come with this assessment. But it was the first time that we have given it here in Redwood City. We gave it twice. We gave it in the fall, and we just finished giving it in the winter. And it is not without its challenges, as it was never meant to be administered remotely. So all of the information that we'll be looking at needs to be considered in that way, in that this is meant to be an assessment that's given in class with students on computers that takes up to an hour or so for math and an hour or so for reading. And it took much longer than that because of all the challenges that we faced in giving it for the first time and giving it on an iPad and giving it on a computer using our clever platform. Wasn't perfect, but all that being said, we still got some good information from that. So as I mentioned, iReady is an assessment as well as a number of tools in a large product that we apparently are only using about 1% of at this time, and it's still plenty as we're getting used to it. But it is an adaptive diagnostic assessment that is available for students grades K through H. But as students take the assessment, depending on their skill level, it can take them up to a 12th grade level in both reading and in math. It's available in English for math and reading, and it's available in Spanish for math. Next year, it will be available in reading. We were anticipating it would be available in reading, in in Spanish this year for the reading diagnostic. But because of a number of reasons, iReady postponed their release of their Spanish reading assessment until next year. But it also comes with some tools that, depending on the outcome of the assessment, teachers are able to use with their students in small groups, and students are able to use immediately in the form of lessons that are are assigned to students automatically through iReady based on the results of the assessment. There are some games that students can play, but there are also some tools for teachers to use that give some great ideas for instruction for groups of students based on their assessment outcomes. So all that is available to teachers. And again, they are just learning about this now because this is such a new tool for us. So we administered the diagnostic in the fall, and the initial window went from two weeks to almost four because it took a lot longer to administer than we thought. It was September 21st through October 16th. And then the second window, we just completed right before the break. And so that's why this data is getting to sort of hot off the press before anybody has seen it because it was, the the final day of testing was the day right before the teachers went on their their week, winter assess, their winter break. So it didn't take quite as long this time around in that we staggered it. And also, it was used for our eighth grade students as part of their placement criteria in the high school. And so the eighth grade students knew that. And so I think you'll see when you see the eighth grade results that that had a positive impact on how seriously they took this exam and did pretty well. There has been professional development that has gone along with this assessment as well. We began in June when we had made the decision to use iReady this year. There was an introduction to iReady before the teachers left for the summer. And then when they came back during the two days prior to school beginning, when we had professional development, there was iReady assessment. And a lot of this was just an overview because it wasn't hooking on to much information or practical experiences that the teachers had had at that time. So what we're finding now is that as the teachers are attending training, they have a lot better questions because it is hooking on to their experience. And in terms of using the data, the professional development for them is tomorrow. Because we did, as I just mentioned, we did just figure out this data now. And the teachers will be looking at this data and will be meeting with the iReady representatives and talking about how to use that data for instructional practices. Many of the teachers are already using the lessons, but in terms of using the data to actually take a look at the outcomes for their students and to use that data in putting students into small groups and using the instructional supports that come with this, that is going to be gone over tomorrow in some training. So in terms of looking at the data from diagnostic number two, I want to say a couple of things in how we're presenting this data. And I first want to thank the two people who put all of these data charts together, which were not me, but were our two outstanding TOSSAs, our teachers on special assignment, Kendall Klein and Bronya Whip, who in a day put all of these charts together and are just want to thank them so much for how how quickly they put this together. So we did decide to present the data possibly differently than how you've seen data in the past, where data was presented on a school-by-school basis. And we are presenting the data to you to take a look at as a district and by grade level across the district because we believe that our data is representative of our system and where our system is strong and where our system has some areas of need. And it's not a school-by-school issue as much as it's our our system issue in terms of how we're best meeting the needs of our kids. And so each school, of course, has their own data. Each teacher has their own data. But the data we're presenting to you tonight is our system-wide data in looking at all of our students. And then we also have broken that out by English learners and our students with IEPs across our district as opposed to school by school. So our first, we have reading and math data. And so our first set of slides go through the reading data, and then we have math data, and then we have comparison, reading, and math data. And again, there's, there's a lot here to take a look at. And so I will kind of explain how these data charts are put together. And then if there's interest in having deeper conversation, we can do that as well. So the way iReady presents data, it certainly goes down to the student level, and I'll be showing you an example at the end of this presentation of the information that will be going to parents at this reporting period. We did not share the parent letters during our last administration because we believed that the results are more reflective of some of our challenges in administering the exam than the actual student performance. But I'll be showing you that parents will be getting information about their children at this, at the end of this trimester when they come to the conference or receive their report cards. So the way that iReady breaks out district-level data is they place based on the results. And again, the diagnostic is adaptive, so students can go up and down the the standards for their grade levels depending on on what they have learned and what they're familiar with. And one other piece to to give you information about as well is that those of you who watched your children take the test, the test is, does not just include their grade level standards, right? Because it, as it is adaptive, it includes information that they haven't been exposed to and maybe above their grade level to see what it is that the student is able to do. And so approximately 50% of the test is new information for the students. And so that's, that's the way the test is designed. So if you take a look at these charts here, the the green are the students who, across the district, scored at early on grade level or mid to above grade level, right? That at, in diagnostic two. And so out of our 6,600-something students who would qualify to take this test, 5,866 students have a score. And some of that is because in reading, there was only about 60 kindergarten children who took it. We did not require kindergarten children to take this test, but we made it an option for teachers who wanted to give it to their students, and some did. And then as it was only available in English, students who were in a bilingual setting did not probably take this test. Again, that was an option if the teachers wanted to see what kind of transfer students were making from their Spanish instruction into English, but it was not required. So that's why there's a lower number of of children who took the test compared to the total number of students who are enrolled. So these charts give information about who is at or above grade level, who is on grade level, who is one grade level below, and then who are two or three or more grade levels below. So that's in the chart above, and then you can see it also graphically displayed in the circle graph. And what iReady also provides for us is information about growth targets based on the database that iReady keeps for the million students that are in their database. They make a projection of what is a typical growth target for each student. And so this is information on this slide about the students who are at these different levels that you saw on the earlier slide, who met their their percentage who met their typical growth target in between the first diagnostic to the second diagnostic. And then who, who, because of that growth, actually improved their placement. And so you'll see that information in the column on the right. The bar graphs down below show the information between diagnostic one and diagnostic two as to who met their targets. And you'll see what we want to see, which is that the pink bar is going up, you know, in terms of the mid or above grade level, right? That more students are are changing their placement and are going, are advancing to the mid or above grade level. And that at the two grade levels below and the three grade levels below compared to the first diagnostic, there are fewer children in those categories. So this is by grade level. And again, you'll see that the 58 kindergarten children who took this in reading may have been hand-selected because they knew that they would do very well, and they did. They did great. So you'll see, this is again, just reading, and the green being early at grade level to mid to above grade level, the sort of yellow as being one grade level below, and then the the reddish colors as being two to three or more grade levels below. And you'll, again, I think you'll see here, although there are still numbers of students who are pretty far below that worry us, I think you'll see that the eighth grade readers here who are scoring mid or above grade level or early on grade level, I think this is a reflection because eighth grade students, I know, are having some trouble with with engagement at times. But they took this test seriously because they knew that this is going to have an impact on their placement. And so that that's a learning for us in terms of how we approach the administration of this exam for the other grade levels as well. So, excuse me, this is that same information only laid out sideways because we all like to seek information in a in a variety of ways. And so this also, I think, helps kind of compare the grade levels in terms of if we look at these bars as to where students are compared to like 50% of the students at at each grade level. And then this is a piece of information that is also available for each teacher for his or her class composite, as well as the parents will be receiving this information for his or her, for their children. Because it breaks down the placement for for reading, and it will do the same thing for math by domain, by within the standards. So in reading, it's the phonological awareness, which is hearing sounds and words, phonics, which is being able to, you know, recognize and and read the sounds, high-frequency words, vocabulary, comprehension in literature, and comprehension with informational texts. And I think we see with this, so this is district-wide, that our strengths are definitely in word study and word recognition and that we have work to do in comprehension, which of course is is the higher-level skill. So this is a chart that shows a comparison between our district's English learners across the district and our students who are not designated as English learners. And we'll see here that our system is not serving our Our system is not serving our our English learners well in English reading. Again, many of our English learners at the primary grades who may be fantastic readers in Spanish. Did not take the English test, so we don't have that comparative information to show. But this again is information that we will be using as we think about our next steps in terms of support for our teachers and support for our students. And so this shows the growth. And again, we see the trend as improving of students who are are moving up levels in terms of. Their percentages, but again, it's still a very low percentage to to not feel that we're, that our work is done. This is our students with IEPs. Compared to diagnostic one, again, the fall diagnostic to the diagnostic that we just finished. In terms of their overall growth at a district level. And then for math, now we have the same charts and to take you quickly through these as well. Here we have a closer number of students. Those being assessed to the actual total, again, kindergarten students, very few of them took the math exam. And for the students who did not finish the test, at which there were a few. They're not counted in here either. This is just the number of students who actually completed the exam by February 12. All right. And so again, we see here the same information about students who are at or mid or above grade level. Based on having met the target and with improved placement since September. And by grade level. Same information. And now being able to see it differently. And I think one of the things that this shows too is that. Students are stronger in reading across our district, across our grade levels than they are in math. Except in kindergarten, those outstanding children who took this test. And in math, again, the teachers and parents will be receiving this information about their class. In terms of the domain of math of being, how are the students doing numbers and operation, algebra and algebraic thinking. Measurement data and geometry. And this again will. Be discussed tomorrow when the teachers meet with the iReady representatives to talk about what to do with this data in terms of instruction and instructional grouping. This is information in math for the English learners. More of whom took the exam in math than they did in reading. They were able to take it in Spanish or English. And again, this is this chart in terms of students meeting their target growth. And those who improved their placement.
Liz, did you just say that with the math, they could take it in Spanish or English?
The math was available in Spanish. And so the teachers, depending on the program the students were enrolled in. These teachers made the designation if they wanted their students to take the math assessment. Or the English assessment. So for example, at Adelante Selvi, the majority of students in the primary grades took the math assessment in Spanish.
All right. So it wasn't, it was more an option for our students who are in the immersion program.
Or the bilingual.
Or the bilingual program, not necessarily for an EL student who's in an English only program.
And most likely not, because if they haven't had instruction in Spanish, then that probably wouldn't show what they had learned. But so I would say it would be primarily the newcomers, the students in the bilingual programs and the students who are in the Spanish immersion program.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, sure. And this is the students with IEPs. In terms of their, their growth. Meeting their targets since the first diagnostic. And there's not much change. Now, this is the comparison between math and reading. Across the district. So this is, you know, an aggregate of the information compared. Who are the students who are scoring at these different levels? And a comparison of students meeting their target growth. And students with improved placement, a comparison between math and reading. A comparison for our English learners. Math are the top two. I'm not sure if everybody can see this very well, being the top two rows, math for EL and non-EL. And then reading being the bottom two rows between EL and non-EL. And again, we see, we see the disparity. Math and reading off, and this is just looks like so many numbers. So it is a lot of numbers, but it is meant to give you. Many different ways of looking at this information. And again, we can certainly spend more time talking about this after I show you what all is here. This is impossible probably for most people to see, but this is comparing. Math and reading at every grade level. Same. And then I what I want to show you here is the. The report for families that will be distributed this trimester with the report card and at the conferences. And so this is an example of the reading assessment reports. And then the math assessment reports will look just like this, only with the math scores. So you will, each parent will receive information about each child, about the test growth. That they had made from their overall performance and from the difference from their first diagnostic. As well as a breakdown by the domain. From both, for both tests again, in terms of what grade level they are performing at. Tested out, if you can read that, tested out means that they got all the answers right. Right. So there was no place left for them to go in terms of trying to get more correct answers. Or they got the maximum score, for example, for this, for this person. It also gives a Lexile level. And so I would like to open it up for questions and I'd be happy to put. I can put this information now in the chat if, if you think people would like to take a look at that.
All right, questions or comments from the board?
So I have a question regarding the math test for the English learners. I understand that maybe they are being taught in English because they're learning English. But I'm wondering if just like the Adelante Selvi students. Which I do know that they do get math in Spanish. If for the English learners, it would have been, again, maybe a better option to perhaps have that option to take it in Spanish. To see if they would understand the. The steps they had to take before, you know what I'm saying? If they took it in Spanish, they would probably be able to comprehend. Again, maybe better than if they took it in English, if it was harder for them to understand. Unless they, you know, need a foreign lesson.
Well, they would need to be able to read the Spanish. Right. And so I, I think, I, and so I can certainly follow up with teachers to see if they made decision, individual decisions for their children, for their students. But the students would need to be pretty proficient, depending on their grade level, in being able to read the Spanish as well. And so if they've only been instructed in English reading.
Because not everybody.
Pardon me?
Because not everybody knows how to read in Spanish?
Not everybody who speaks Spanish knows how to read in Spanish unless I. Unless they've been taught probably. But I can certainly follow up with. The teachers to see if they made individual decisions about students. I think generally if they have been instructing their students in English math, they gave the English exam. Because the instruction has been in English and the students are probably. Used to reading the the math vocabulary in English. And I don't know if they would know what, if they could make that transfer without having been taught in Spanish, how to make that transfer into Spanish math vocabulary. But I can certainly follow up on that.
Okay, thanks.
So this was a diagnostic test and there's a question in regard to. Standardized test by the state. And then, so the state does have a waiver into the federal department of education. And if you've been following any of the social media. You will hear that the Biden administration wants to get, wants us to give a standardized test. We are hoping, and I know Superintendent Tony Thurman. Wrote the Biden administration that we should be giving that test this school year. And if we give it, it's only information for. Parents of the school district. Or that we give it sometime in the fall when kids are back in school. So where it is in regard to the standardized test that comes. From the state of California, it all depends on Washington DC is going to tell us what we need to do. So that's answering the question in the chat.
Other questions or comments? Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, okay. First, Liz, thanks Kendall and Bronya for putting together the presentation. I think we can see some, I liked your comment about measuring the system. I think we can probably see that there's places where we can be allocating resources. To be able to improve this. And also assessments matter. You know, we need to know how kids, what kids know and both how, what they know and how they feel. To really inform the instruction that we want to give them. I do want to say we have to take care, you know, we have to make sure that we're using them to identify the the reasons for their learning struggles. And not just the struggles themselves. Like I think this shows us that there are struggles there, but there's, I don't know how we get to that next level deep. That's that, I don't see that coming through in the data here, because I think that harm can come. You know, if we're reducing time for instruction. If we're assigning students to, you know, sort of hours of remediation before they are engaging in challenging grade level work. Or really if we're drawing incorrect conclusions about students. Or schools, which you didn't, you separated that out. So that's good. But if we end up. Drawing incorrect conclusions about students, you know, without really knowing the context in which the learnings occurring. And that's, that's really important now, right? Like. If you're in a quiet bedroom, working on a strong internet connection. Versus, you know, a shared space where the connection's dropping every 10 minutes. Are we measuring that or are we measuring the student's performance? Now at a system level, that's fine. We realize there's a problem and we need to put it in. To, you know, we need to inform our resource decisions, our professional development, how we want to go in and fix these system problems. I worry that if it's coming at a student level, and I heard that there's some students were having placement impacted by it. And I'm just, I'm worried, is a single number is the result of this test that's not taking in the context and pulling all that in. Having negative outcomes on some of our students. And is that the system that we're trying to build here that we want to continue going on? I think the question we need to ask ourselves is how can we use, how this information can be used well? And what are we doing to make sure that's happening? What do we need to do to support it? What resources do we need to do? I think on the other side, we have to ask ourselves, how could it be used poorly? And what sort of safeguards are we going to put in place to make sure that doesn't happen? You know, at a system level, at an aggregate level, I like it. Something peaked when I heard that placement was going to be affected. And so I just. I don't know, I just wanted to share those comments and those thoughts. And I don't know, Dr. Baker, if you have feedback on that or if you.
Liz, do you want to explain the placement?
Sure, sure. And I, Mike, I super appreciate your, your comments. And I'm really glad that you've brought that forward. Because this is not meant to be that kind of an exam. And it was, it was used by the high school district as one of the pieces of information for. Placement into their high school. And a number of us have a number of problems with that, with how Sequoia. Assesses students and places them in certain tracks in their high school. And so that's a whole other story that we'd be happy to to work on over time. But within our district, this is meant to be a diagnostic assessment that's ongoing and universal across our district to get information about. A number of things. It's not meant to be a high stakes placement. It's meant to give. A common assessment that's giving us information about how we're doing in our educational practices. Who are we reaching? Who are we not reaching? And what do we need to do about that? Right? It's not meant to, it, it can be, it should be used for teachers to get information about students who have. Needs in reading comprehension, for example, for informational texts. And so that means I need, I need as a teacher to provide more informational text in my instruction. And think about how I'm designing that, right? It's not meant to. Penalize students for not doing well on that test. And it's not meant to. Track students in any way within our district, right? It's meant to give us information instructionally. And that's where the teachers will be getting this information, you know, like. Tomorrow about how to use the, because what I already also provides is if if you're seeing that there's a large number of students that have these gaps. Here are some additional resources for you to use with these large number of students who may have these gaps and, you know, how to. How to think about instruction. As opposed to think about. Deficiencies in students, right? That's not what it's about. It's about what, what have, what have we as a system provided enough of? And again, I, and I think we'll have better information when we don't have to administer this assessment remotely. It will probably be more accurate, although I think it's more accurate now than it was in the fall. I still, from the stories that we heard about people falling off the calls and and not. And there's children at home who are probably getting some help. Right? And so. You know, it's, it's the best information that we can get right now in a remote situation. Which will only get better as we get back in person. But it's also meant to provide us data to use as we plan our instruction.
So Michael, that tells you that we're not using it to place kids. Certain situations, the high school there. Before Liz, it was Linda and Wendy and myself. Were still involved in the Stanford project where Stanford is working with our school district and the high school district. In regard to just something like this of using a test. For a one time. Use to place a student in. A type of a language arts programs. That's not our intent. The high school has a different mechanism of how they place children. And Stanford is giving them. Input on what that should look like and not just using one shot. A day in a life as a child of taking a test and a test that maybe I'm coming in. I've had a bad day, I care less and I move on. That's not what we're doing. We're using it for information to do better instruction. To make sure that we can provide teachers with the professional development that is needed. So they can meet the needs of our students. It's not to. Create traps, anything like that. No, 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 that's not in our vocabulary.
Any other questions from board members?
I have another question. Do we know why some of the students were not able to finish the test? And if so, what are we going to do about those students? Or how are we actually? Teachers, how do teachers know where those students stand at this point?
So the students who did not finish the test. Didn't, didn't finish the test probably for a number of reasons. And it may have been that they just. Didn't log on again at the end of the testing window or that. There was some. Issues in terms of connectivity and they. issues in terms of connectivity and they kept, there was some frustration on the part of some of the students. There was some issues at, in a few areas of just kind of the scheduling of the assessments and people put it off and then time kind of ran out for the testing window to be open. So we, if, if teachers want to give, the teacher, the test can be given to the students at any time. The teachers can, can, now that they're back, they can ask the students to finish the test. But in ideally, someone is proctoring the students take the test so that if there is an issue with connectivity, students being bumped off of students getting some help on the test, that there's somebody kind of there observing and watching. So they can, the students who did not finish may, may, may finish it at any time. They have to, at this point now, they would have to start over and take the whole test over again, though. Because enough time has passed that it wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to just take up where they left off. But they could, they could finish it.
So I was curious. So first of all, thank you very much for all the work that you've done, your team done in the presentation, all the work that the teachers and others have done. I am curious. So this is the first year we've done this. So unfortunately, we cannot really compare it to previous years like we have with other sorts of data. And I know it's a diagnostic test, so it's a little bit different. But I'm just trying to get a sense from maybe last year and the year before, you know, we were doing benchmark tests and other sorts of diagnostic tests. Do you have a sense of major variations you're seeing? You know, we've heard a lot about learning loss as an example, and I'm just curious, is there anything that we can tell from this data that informs us about that? And then I guess is that, you know, at, at the end of the day, really what we want is we want to inform ourselves so we can do better by kids. So of course, teachers will be using this to basically figure out what more they need to be doing in the classroom, right, to help the students. But do you understand my question? I'm just curious if we have a sense of that, if there's any way to compare it with anything else we've done.
So, um, my understand, and I, there's probably somebody here who can answer that question because I don't know what their results of other tests were last year. But that the, the kinds of assessments that they were given last year aren't very similar to this assessment that they're given multiple times during a year. That the assessments, they can probably talk more about this is, were more, they were given like a selection, like an I E, I A B for the, similar to the S back, right, where they were given a number of assessment items to around, you know, a block of standards that the teachers got information that was somewhat reflective of the S back exam. This is not that kind of a test. So this, the, the results that they got on the, that kind of exam last year wouldn't be comparable to the exam they got this year. Lexile levels would be the same because this gave Lexile levels and then the reading Lexile levels that the star test gave last year could be compared. We haven't done that, but we could do that. But in terms of the, the other kinds of assessments that I'm familiar with that were given last year, there, it's not comparable information.
I was, I don't, I will say that we have given a star reading assessment multiple times in the areas of need showed comprehension was an area of need in vocabulary. So that's similar. And also relative strengths were in phonics, phonemic awareness, you know, primary foundational skills at K two. So that's similar. Different is that we were able to assess the students in their primary language because teachers would give a one-on-one assessment, for example, at K two. And I know this time, second grade on up, whether they were in a bilingual program or not, were given the assessment. It was K one, that was the option if they were in a bilingual program. And then also difference in newcomer students who took the test, et cetera. So there are some differences, but the overall, I think, picture of comprehension being an area of need is still similar.
Any other questions or comments? I mean, I think the obvious that we're all sort of feeling is we want our kids to do better, right? We want them to be at grade level or above. So we know we have work to do. And, you know, we've seen this in similar tests that we've been giving over the years. And when we have been making progress, which is the good news, it's a little hard to tell with this data, given, you know, all the things that you said about it. But the good news is the teachers will have this data to be able to use to inform their practice in the classroom, right? So that's good. So it, anything else before we move on to the next topic? And I do want to be cognizant of time. We may need to take a short break. But anything else on this? Okay, thank you. So it is, what is it? It is nine thirty-six. We do have a number of things. Would you like to take a five-minute break? Or do you want to carry through? Okay, five-minute break. So we'll come back in five minutes. So that'll be what now it'll be nine forty-three. Okay, thanks. Call the meeting back to order. And let's see. We are on to twelve point three, first reading and discussion of board policy thirteen forty, access to district records.
Thank you. Each board meeting, we're bringing you updated policies or new board policies that need to be reviewed by the board. And we are essentially reviewing things incrementally. Our board policy committee made up of Elisa McAvoy and Janet Lawson, our trustees, meet once a month. So we met a couple of weeks ago and tackled quite a few, and I brought two tonight for first read and one for a second read. So the one that we are currently looking at is access to district records. And really the changes here, as you can see in the board memo, is to allow members of the public to, to use their own equipment on district premises free of charge to photograph, copy, or reproduce a disclosable district record, provided that the equipment does not make physical contact with the record. Previously, the district was able to charge to make copies and still can do so. However, with the new law AB one eight, one nine will allow members of the public to use their own equipment to do the same type of activities in terms of copying. And then there are changes also in the administrative regulations, which essentially breaks down how this will occur. And ensuring that we don't have unauthorized access to district computer systems or secured networks either. So there's a little bit more detail in the administrative regulations. So I was wondering if the board had any questions after reviewing this policy?
I, I know the point of the policy change was for you being able to use your own equipment to take pictures, but I like that the intro changed from, you know, citizens have access to, to members of the public. I think that was a nice inclusive change. So I just wanted to recognize that change as well.
Yeah, thank you.
I think that was a red, that was our change, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So we, we get the templates from CSBA and they had citizens and we put members. Yeah.
You might want to recommend that they change that, being that there are a lot of parents who may not yet be citizens.
Yes. We will make that recommendation. We've also made the recommendation that they're still using he, she, and we try to, we use they to also be inclusive of our members, our community. So yes, Maria, we will pass that on to them. Okay, all right. I don't think we have any comments. Actually, Eliana or Kyle, can you just double check? I didn't see anything come in earlier today. I don't think we have any speaker cards on that. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on. Oh, go ahead, Wendy.
I forgot to mention, we did have our county council review this as well, along with the next one. So I just want to make that point. All right, Elisa.
Oh yeah, no problem. Yeah, it's interesting. We don't always have the county council review them because we know that CSBA has their legal staff review them, but sometimes we have questions. So we double check. Okay. All right. So our next, oh.
To answer your earlier question, we do not have any more speakers cards.
Great. Thank you for checking. Sometimes when I've got like six different screens open and I'm trying to do this, it's a little difficult. So I appreciate the assistance. All right. Twelve point four, we have another first reading and this one is on board policy thirty-two eighty, sale or lease of property.
Thank you. So this was once again, an update. As you know, the district recently shifted programs and school sites. And so we wanted to make sure that, as always, these policies are updated. So as you can see here, we have, and this was again reviewed by our attorney. Mainly to reflect the new law SB eight twenty, which adds until July first, twenty twenty-four, an exemption to the requirement that the boards appoint an advisor committee for the sale or lease of district owned property if the property is not operated as an early childhood education facility or for elementary or secondary instruction. And new law SB ninety-eight, which authorizes until July four, first, twenty twenty-four, the proceeds from the sale or lease of property purchased entirely with local funds to be used for any one-time general fund purpose if certain conditions are met. So there are quite a few items in here that I really wanted to make sure the board spent the time. And thank you to all of those that read these in advance and so forth with scrutiny that, that especially with our most recent changes and upcoming leases and so forth, that may come into fruition that we have this clearly written out. So anyway, as you can read along, you can see the changes that were made within the policy. So I wanted to know if after review, the board has any questions or discussion items for this particular policy.
Well, and this was a process that we already followed. You know, when we were first looking at leasing out our sites, it's just we're updating the policy to reflect the law. Just want to make sure that that's clear to the public, too.
Good point, Janet. Thank you.
It's like there's no comments. Okay. All right. So we're on to consent items. I need a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Mariana, Cecilia, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Lawson.
Hi.
Trustee Marcus.
Hi.
Vice President Deasilcom.
Hi.
President McAvoy.
Hi. All right, we're on to action items, fourteen point one, recommendation regarding approval of second amendment to the agreement between our CSD and the National Urban Alliance.
That was just to honor the request of some of our teachers who wanted additional time with our mentors. And there'll be an, actually another addendum after speaking with Liz and Dr. Baker about adding a request of a school site who wanted more support and also potentially adding to new sites. I did speak with administrators and they're approving that. But I just don't want to announce it yet. I'm not sure if they talked with their faculty yet. So, but that should be coming in the two weeks.
Yeah, that's great. So this covers eight of our schools and it sounds like there's two additional schools that may be interested, which is great. And we have twelve total schools. So almost all of our schools will be working with NUA. Assuming we approve this. So, and the new one coming forward. So any, any comments or questions?
I'm, I'm always happy to see our work with National Urban Alliance expanding. I think it's fantastic. So that's my only comment.
Yeah, I, I like seeing the positive engagement. That's, 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 this is what we wanted to see out of it. So that's nice to see.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I was just going to make a motion to approve.
Oh, Janet. Do I have a second?
Second.
Cecilia's a second. Roll call vote.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Lawson.
Hi.
Trustee Marcus.
Hi.
Vice President Deasilcom.
Hi.
President McAvoy.
Hi. And Linda, thank you so much for spearheading this for our school district. I know we've been in so many conversations with NUA the last month. And it's just every time we meet with them, we're, it's so inspiring. And I think we all learned something and are making our district better. So thank you.
Thank you. It's an honor working with them. They're wonderful. Thank you.
Elisa, you're on mute.
On to fourteen point two.
I was trying to read your lips, Elisa, because I knew it was coming.
Yeah.
So each year, at this particular meeting in late February, and then again in March, we discuss staffing and staffing needs as we progress forward. And at the beginning of the year or throughout the course of the year, we do hire teachers that are on temporary contracts. And those are usually issued when a teacher is on leave and we are hiring somebody to replace that teacher. Or if we have situations where there is a program that needs a staff member, a teacher that's categorically funded by the school site, for example, or other categorically funded monies. And so each year we do need the board to approve the release of our temporary teachers. And you were provided a list, a private list of the names of those teachers. They do receive a letter. They are very aware that they've signed a contract that has an end date in June. However, this is a formal process that needs to occur. And in many times, we're able to rehire our teachers back. So which is great. However, our ed code requires that this process unfolds as it does. So tonight I'm requesting approval to release our temporary teachers.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Maria?
Second.
Mike is a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Lawson.
Hi.
Trustee Marcus.
Hi.
Vice President Deasilcom.
Hi.
President McAvoy.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for all your work on that and all the other HR activities. Okay, fourteen point three, recommendation approval of Public Health Institute safely opening schools collaborative.
Okay, John. John and I are both going to present this, but you're on mute, John. So I'll but you're still on mute. Okay, you can start. There you go.
Erin spearheaded this, this, this project for us. As you know, we have some antigen testing being done at two of our school sites and it has not started yet. There was a lot of work, paperwork that had to be completed first, the training. And then the other piece that really held it up was the, it's not a contract, it's kind of an MOU. And Claire had a lot of concerns regarding the MOU for you that, for those in the public that do not know Claire, she's our chief deputy counsel. And she was working back and forth with their attorney to make sure that we were in this agreement, making the arrangements of no liability towards the district for any of our employees or families who are going to partake in that test. So that's what took a long period of time to get that really done correctly. And satisfy her. And as long as she is satisfied, then I'm sure we are all fine with moving forward with this. Did you want to add anything, Wendy?
I just think it's another layer opportunity to understand if we need to take action if we have a student or a staff member that tests, it's a more frequent test. So I think that will really add value to our current testing process. So thank you for spearheading it, John.
Okay, any comments or questions? All right. Do I have a motion to approve? Okay, Cecilia and Janet, all the, roll call vote.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Lawson.
Hi.
Trustee Marcus.
Hi.
Vice President Deasilcom.
Hi.
Hi.
President McAvoy.
Hi. And I will say, some of our surrounding districts are jealous of our ability to move forward with this, right? I know that it's come up on our county calls, and they're like, how did you get in the collaborative? We want in the collaborative. So anyway, this will be great data to help the whole system move forward. So thank you, Dr. Baker and team. Okay, let's see. Oh, the next one is fourteen point four. It's the CSBA delegate assembly nominations. And actually, this season, it's quite easy. There's three candidates for three spots. So we're just one, and we could always write in a candidate, but it's basically on the list, if I remember from memory, we have Carrie Dubois and Greg Land, who are incumbents. They're running again. And then Dana Luhon, who is out of South City as a school board member, and she's also a human resources director in Jefferson High School District, and she's the president of the San Mateo County School Board Association. She has agreed to run, which is great. She's a really wonderful person. I think we all know her. So anyway, those are the three delegates, and do I have a motion to nominate them, or I suppose you could decide to do something else? Or not nominate them, I guess vote them. It's a ballot, actually. They've already been nominated. Excuse me.
I'll make a motion to approve the ballot.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll basically vote for the three of them as a school, school board. Yeah, okay. That's the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Cecilia's a second. Roll call, please.
Rusty Wells.
Hi.
Rusty Lawson.
Hi.
Rusty Marcus.
Hi.
Vice President Deasilcom.
Hi.
President McAvoy.
Hi.
I guess, just so you know, I think the Dana Luhon spot was Davina Drapkin, if you're curious, because I know some of you might be curious who, who didn't run again, and she left her board, so that's why she's not running. Okay, let's see. We're on to report from board members and superintendent. Would somebody like to volunteer?
I don't have any.
Okay. And then, Alisa, you already mentioned I did the dumpling making class. You were there for the Lunar New Year. That was fun with my, my two girls. That was a lot of fun. We had a bond meeting last week. We were discussing the budget, and of course, tonight's agenda items. I met with a group of parents that are advocating at the state level for money in the budget for learning loss mitigation and support, better support, English learner students with, and special needs and low-income students of color. So that was, that was a nice meeting. And then we did the vision and mission workshop yesterday, where I partially just spectated, but partially got to attend, depending upon the attendees.
And I only had the equity work as well.
So I also attended the bond meeting. And then we had a workforce housing meeting last week. And then also the RCTA climate committee meeting this week I went to.
All right, let's see. This morning, I went to Redwood City together. They have about every couple of months, we have a Safe Routes to Schools committee meeting, and I do try to go to that, and my capacity is on the leadership council. And actually, it was a really good session today. We heard from both the city of Redwood City, as well as the county, about different plans and projects. And one of the thing that's happening in the next couple of months is that they are putting a traffic light in at Cleveland and Jefferson. So that's where a lot of our MIT and North Star students cross. So yay. And actually, those cross, I think, there that also might be heading over to Roosevelt, some of them, you know, depending upon where they cross, but mostly it's our MIT, North Star. So phew, that's the plot, that's the spot that I know Dennis made lots of phone calls for us over the years. So that'll be a huge safety thing. And then also at Clinton, which is just the next street over, they're going to have one of those Hawk lights, which, but I, if I understand it correctly, when they push a button, there'll actually be red blinking lights, so cars do need to stop. But if there's no pedestrians, it's just, you know, a go. So those, and I think there's more high school students that cross there, but some of our students probably also cross there. So, yeah, so that should be happening in the next couple of months, which is great. And I went by there the other day, and I did see the construction. There was also conversation from the Mount Carmel neighborhood, interested about additional bike lanes possibly over to Clifford, because now Clifford is their home school. So there's a group of Mount Carmel individuals advocating for that, and it brought up a bigger discussion that we want to work with the city of Redwood City. They're actually going through a process right now. And hopefully, we can identify some additional bike paths from some of our neighborhoods to different school sites, right? Because we know that kids are going all over the place in our community to different schools. It's not just their neighborhood school. So that was sort of exciting to get more, I think, parents interested in this, as well as the various staff people. So there'll be more on that, and I think through Redwood City Together, which was Redwood City twenty twenty, as well as the two by two by two, we'll be having more discussions on that. So stay tuned. And then the county has a plan, and you know, one of the things that they're looking at, because they know it's really needed, is some kind of a ped bike path that would go over the railroad tracks over in that Fifth Avenue area. So or the, you know, the garf, anyway, so they didn't actually show a map, so I wasn't entirely sure where, but we do know that there's more things needed in the North Fair Oaks area. So they're going to come back and talk in more detail at the next meeting about that. So I'll keep you posted there. I went to equity sessions. Workforce Housing, in addition to the meeting we had with Peter. Yesterday, we met with Hart, who was helping us with the workforce housing survey. So that was a really good meeting, I thought, in terms of moving the whole thing forward. And then you know, just various county calls and CSBA meetings. Okay, Dr. Baker?
The only thing that was not mentioned, I've been to many of the same ones, was the Roosevelt conference yesterday.
Oh, right, I went to that, yeah.
And the real big aha from that was parents, you know, yes, they're, they're, they have a lot of in-person classrooms at Roosevelt, the exception of, I think, two grade levels, or one grade level this time. But they're concerned about childcare. That came up over and over and over yesterday. When they return and return to fully in-person and not do AM PM, or even if we did AM PM, childcare is going to be a really big issue. So we need to keep that in the forefront and see if we can get our partners to work more closely with us to see how much additional childcare we can get for our parents who are working before school and after school. As you are aware, we have the REACH program that is definitely working with some of our school sites. We have the Boys and Girls Club that is working with our three-phase school sites. And the Y is the only one that is a partner that is working with Roosevelt. With that being said, they've been having difficulty hiring people to continue their childcare slots that they want to have available. So what I said I would do is work with HR and with the Y one right now to start with, to see how we can better collaborate with them to get their job postings out and about. And then also, the other piece is what classrooms, and I know Priscilla, I did talk to the principal today about the classrooms that are being used right now by outside entities. What classrooms can we avail to our partners so that we can provide some childcare, either before school or after school? Especially when we come back in the fall, because that was a really big need that came forth from that community, and I could see it coming along probably that others as we ramp up to come back in the fall. Alisa, did you want to say anything else in regard to that?
Yeah, yeah, I think, you know, you, you basically covered the, the importance of the childcare, particularly if we have, we're still back in a hybrid situation. If there's an AM PM, just a couple of hours a day is just not enough time for working parents. So we're definitely going to have to think about that. The other thing that came up was transportation. And we did tell them the reality is in our budget, that's very difficult for us. But I will say that Sam Trans was on the call today with Redwood City Together. So I did bring it up, that we'd like to have more conversations. Is there some support that we can get from them? So transportation came up. So I, I, one of the things we did talk about is maybe in the surveys that we do out on, you know, coming back or not coming back, or what you want, we might want to think about if there's a question or two around before or after care, as well as transportation, not making any promises, but just trying to get a sense of what people need. So we can have more conversations about that. I see Wendy taking notes. That's good. But we can, we can give you more details. Yeah. Okay, anything else, Dr. Baker? And it occurs to me that meeting was today, not yesterday. So you have had a very long day. A long twenty-four hours, anyway. Okay, let's see. Information sixteen, we got information on the investment fund. Any questions or comments there? All right, correspondence. We continue to get emails regularly, particularly around reopening, I think, and also some other issues at the school site. And I know, Dr. Baker, you're following up, so thank you. And then, let's see, other business suggested items. Oh, actually, I should ask, is there any other correspondence? Okay. And let's see, other business suggested items for future agenda. I have something that I want to bring up at some point, and I'd sent Dr. Baker a note on this, but I'm going to wait, just given the whole everything we've had. But anyway, so I don't know if anybody has anything that's urgent. Okay. All right. Board agenda calendar. I did want to let folks know that in talking to Hart about the workforce survey for our housing, as well as Peter Ingram, our consultant, we were looking at having a study session, if this works for folks, before our Wednesday, April fourteenth meeting. So you know, six to seven, but maybe even five thirty to seven, if that's something that we could pull off.
I can do six to seven.
Okay, all right. Well, let's do six to seven, and hopefully we can get through it. And then I suppose if we have any closed session items, we'll probably need to do those after. I think we just want to separate it from the regular meetings, so those people that are interested in workforce housing can be there. And we'll basically be sharing the reports that we have and having a conversation, getting comments from people.
Alisa, in April?
What's that?
Did you say April?
April.
Okay.
Do I have the wrong date?
Well, I had down March twenty-fourth, but that may have changed when you talked to Hart.
Yeah, the problem is, we may not get the full report. We're going to get some data from them in the next week or so, so we will continue to be able to move through the committee work, but we probably won't get a final report from them until March twenty-third. Maybe they'll be able to get it sooner. But then Peter said he really wants a chance to look through it and make sure we're well-prepared for our study session. That would be kind of the first opportunity for the public, just the whole public to see it.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, and then the issue is that I, we looked at well, don't, don't we have spring break or something, too?
No, spring break is.
Or twenty-ninth.
Did I say, yeah, why did we say April? Oh, no, that's, that's twenty-fourth, right, the week of thirty-first. And then our next regular meeting is the fourteenth, so we could potentially have it on the seventh. Anyways, the fourteenth, okay? Okay, all right. Okay, any other changes to the agenda? All right. Okay, well, ten eleven, ten twelve. All right, adjournment. Action required. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right, a second. Okay, Mike does a second. And I think we all say yes.
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. Thank you, our staff. I know you're all working so hard. Really appreciate all that you're doing. And thank you to those attendees that stuck with us the whole.